This conference will not be recorded.
I'd like to welcome you all to the Taos County Board of County Commissioners Commission Regular Meeting of Tuesday, October 18, 2022. And for the record, it is 9:05. A call to order? I'm sorry, roll call please, excuse me.
Commissioner Fambro, Commissioner Gaios, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Vice Chair Brush.
Present.
Chair of the Hill.
Present.
Okay, next, we have inspirational devotion. And is there any one of us that would like to say a few words? We don't have anyone in particular here. So, okay, so we're going to go ahead and move on. Pledge of Allegiance. And if our sheriff would do us the honor and lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Vice Chair, would you please lead us home to the flag?
Sure. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the Zia symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Thank you. Okay, and now I'd like to go ahead and move on to item six, which is introduction of guests. And before us, we have Bryce Bitzy, Taos County Extension Agent. And would you please, and of course, I'd like to acknowledge that we have Christina Turner from, and I don't remember the title, my apologies, but I know she's played a very instrumental part, as well as Monica Gonzalez from the Extension Office. So, Mr. Bryce Bitzy, would you please come on up? Yes, welcome, by the way.
Thank you for inviting me here.
There.
All right, thank you for inviting me, appreciate it. Just to give you a quick rundown of what I've been doing, so far, I've just assisted community members with insect tree and plant identification around the county, along with farm planning assistance on whatever properties they have, whether it's half an acre to a couple dozen acres, doesn't matter. Also assisted community members with recommendation of herbicides if they wanted to go the herbicide route for weed control, or just control of unwanted vegetation on their properties. We've also assisted with insecticide recommendations for unwanted pests. A lot of them are just, what do you call them, gray alder bugs? It seems to be a big issue around here. We've also provided community members with chemical and organic control of unwanted pest and vegetation, because it seems like there's quite a few people here who don't want to go the chemical route. So we try to offer them an alternative route, not using chemicals. So far as what I've done, besides what I just said, I've introduced myself to other community members at the county fair we had back in August. Next week, I am hosting a beef quality assurance certification training for our beef cattle producers here in Taos County. We have invited neighboring counties as well, across northern New Mexico. And that's going to happen on Wednesday, October 26 at 3:00 PM. And we are having a dinner after that as well, that is going to be sponsored by the New Mexico Beef Council. And so that's all I've done so far. It doesn't sound like much, but it's been a very, very busy.
I'm sure you have been busy.
I know that this position has been vacant for a while now. So I'm getting three, four years of questions in one week. So that's fun. And all are welcome to the County Extension Office. Please feel free to come by, eight to five. Don't come during lunch, I won't be there. But come after that. And just bring questions or whatever you have, concerns, comments, let us know.
Okay. And Mr. Bitzy, can you tell us a little bit about yourself and, you know, your love for what you do?
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of share a little bit?
Yeah, so I went to New Mexico State University for my undergrad, got my bachelor's degree from there in animal science. There was mostly focused on equine science with horses and chemistry. From there, I went to Purdue University to get my graduate degree, my master's degree in animal science as well, focused in ruminant nutrition. So that's just cattle nutrition, so beef cattle. My particular field was in feedlot nutrition with steers, feedlot steers. My background was just methane mitigation. So we were trying to reduce methane output from steers. I'm not sure how much you follow with greenhouse gases, especially nowadays, but we are trying to decrease the methane production within US agriculture. So I did my little bit, which is not much, but it was something, at Purdue. I do come from a beef cattle family in northwestern New Mexico on Aboho Nation, and we raise Herefords. But nowadays, we raise Herefords, Angus, Semantals, and Charlet, with also a quarter horse breeding program too. And now I'm here in Taos, New Mexico, after being in Indiana for a while. And I'm excited to be here and waiting to see where this takes me.
Great, thank you. And I would like to say we're excited that you're here. And as you stated, that position was open for quite some time. So, you know, we're thrilled that we have someone on board. And so we look forward to, you know, visiting with you.
Yeah.
And seeing where this goes. Thank you.
Yeah, give us a call, email, anytime, and we'll be there.
Great, thank you.
All righty.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, we have, with us is Jonathan Hupp, New Mexico Legal Aid. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much for inviting me. Yeah, I'm Jonathan Hupp with New Mexico Legal Aid. So I'm a staff attorney here in the Taos office. And the good and exciting thing is that I used to think it was five years, but I recently learned it was eight years since New Mexico Legal Aid has had an attorney here. So I'm thrilled to have the position and be a part of this community. I started on August 1. In case, well, I imagine since there's not been someone here for so long, many people aren't familiar with what legal aid does. But what we do is provide civil legal services to those who otherwise couldn't afford access to legal representation in the justice system. To qualify for our services, you do have to be below a certain income level, which I'm happy to discuss with anyone afterwards. But we pride ourselves on being accessible and available to the community and, again, providing access to justice that otherwise wouldn't be available. We work in primarily four areas, housing issues, eviction defense is a big one within that. We provide consumer protection defense, issues related to economic securities and government benefits, and also family law. Those are kind of the primary practice areas that we have and that we provide assistance to citizens with. But since someone hasn't been here for quite some time, listening to the community and what its needs are, I'm working on some, doing that, and also some special projects that may be related to preserving our agricultural heritage here.
Right.
And, you know, just want to be listen, excuse me, responsive and listen to the community and try to meet the demands that are here. So thank you very much for having me and allowing me to introduce myself.
Great. It's exciting to see that we have someone on board. I remember the days when we did have someone there to help the community. And so just a quick question, awareness, how will you be, this is one way to, you know, let people know that you exist, that you're here. Is there, what other avenues in which, what will you be doing in order to let the public know, the community know?
Yeah, actually, since I've been here, I've been doing quite a bit of outreach, reaching out to community partners. We are fortunate to have a variety of great nonprofit organizations here from, geez, Heart of Taos, Dream Tree, Youth Heartline, the Nurturing Center, ENSK, or Sea School. And I myself actually have been stationed out at the FEMA Centers in Mora, providing legal services there, meeting a lot of citizens in Mora and San Miguel County. But obviously, there were some southern Taos County residents affected by those disasters as well. And if there are any recommendations of who else to reach out to, I'm all ears, because that's what we want to do, is let people know that we're here and we're here to serve.
Right. Thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Yes.
Yes, could you please give us where your office is located and a phone number?
Sure. The office is at 204 Montoya Street, Unit A, but it's a small building. The office number is 575-758-2218.
I want to say that's where the office was in the past.
Yeah, it's been there for quite a while. My assistant, Toni Chacon, has actually worked for legal aid for over 30 years, and she's been there even without attorney for a long time. So if you call, she'll answer the phone and direct you to whatever you need.
Great, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so approval of agenda, commissioners. Is there a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the agenda.
And I will second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Call for the vote, please.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Vice Chair Brush.
Yes.
Chair of the Hill.
Yes. So next, we've got item A, awards and recognition. Recognition of award for Sergeant Gilbert Atencio and Taos County Sheriff's Office being recognized by Mothers Against Drunk Driving, referred to as MAD, for Rural Officer of the Year and Rural Agency of the Year, Rule 21, 2022. And with us, and to start us off, is our Sheriff Terry Hoegra.
I can.
And Steve Mieda, is he, or our undersheriff, he's not here today.
Somebody had to stay and keep the office.
I understand. We appreciate that. It's good to see you all here.
Thank you, commissioners. It's a great honor. Sarge, please join me here. So, we were recognized by MAD, Mothers Against Drunk Driving, for DWI enforcement initiatives. As you know, during the couple of years of the COVID, the pandemic, whatever we choose to call it, most agencies around the state suspended any DWI checkpoints and activities. We put a twist on that, and we continued doing those checkpoints, and we added to it COVID information. And we would stop and vehicles coming through, good evening, I'm Sheriff Hoegra from Taos County Sheriff's Office. Have you consumed any alcoholic beverages this evening? We would make our contact from a distance, but we would do the observations as best we could. And then we would hand out information about COVID and the restrictions in Taos County. A few other agencies around the state saw what we were doing, picked up on it, but not all of them. Sergeant Atencio was very instrumental in making that happen. It's countless how many DWI, or would be DWI offenders simply didn't drive due to the advertisements and knowing checkpoints and saturation patrols were going on throughout Taos County. But we did see a significant reduction in crashes during that time. So it was kind of an outside of the box thing. Very honored that MAD recognized that. Taking it a step further, they recognized Sergeant Atencio individually for being the Urban Officer of the Year and doing above and beyond more than any other officer in this state to combat DWI offenders, driving, crashes, and worse. These are the awards they gave us. Quite an honor. Very heavy.
Nice looking. Yes.
Looking. And with that, there's just a few people I want to recognize, or a few other disciplines. Taos County Fire and EMS joined us at the COVID checkpoints where we were passing out information. And they were our safety feature, if you will. After 20 minutes on the line of making contacts, we would step to a side. We had a decontamination area where those folks sprayed us down with Lysol. We did hand sanitizer. Of course, we wore masks and so forth during those contacts, just for our safety as well as everyone else. And of course, we offered that to motorists passing through as well. West EMS joined us for that. We set them up at the Highway 285, 522, the Colorado border coming into New Mexico, and then also at the county lines coming into Taos County, because as you know, a lot of the restrictions were different. We did write a lot of citations during those for equipment and moving violations, as well as made several arrests for warrants, DWI, and other things. So a little bit of an initiative I hope we never have to go through again. And with that, I want to recognize Sergeant Atencio. He's the pillar of the sheriff's office that really made this all happen. And I turn the floor to him.
So these awards, it took a team effort. I T right there. That's my team. These people already have died in our county during the last four years. So we accepted these awards for them. Maria Lena was only 16 years old. Sedby Cobra, his mom, keeps in contact with our office. She is so grateful for everything that we did for her. And his friend, Tada Bisker, they were in Taos just working, working the river rafters, at river rafters, and a drunk driver killed him. A famous country singer was in Taos for the barn dance, impaired by drugs and alcohol, over 100 miles an hour hit and led him through as she was heading home from work, killed her. So that's the impact that we've made in Taos. MAD finally recognized it. 20 years, and Sheriff can tell you, they've never done it in 20 years that I've been here. And they finally recognized our efforts. I urge you guys to get with our commissioners, to support us and what we're trying to do out there. Keep people that are impaired off the streets. Get with the commissioners and voice your opinion about that, seriously, because we do make a difference. We do make a difference in Taos County. Every day we make a difference. You can ask my crew how many fadals, how many horrific accidents that we've responded to, or never should have happened. Never should have happened. But it happened, and we have to deal with that. Something that we will carry for the rest of our lives up here. So with that said, thank you guys for supporting us. Thank you, Sheriff, my team. Thank you, guys. Johnny, thank you for being here. As you guys all know, I'm the chairman of our DUI council, have been for two years now. I've been part of our DUI council for all the whole time that I've been here in Taos, and have moved up through the ladder. And, you know, they have the confidence and me being their leader, and I'm very proud to be part of that organization too. So thank you very much, guys.
Mr. Atencio? I believe Commissioner O'Donnell has something.
Yes, on behalf of the Taos County Commission, we'd like you to present this J clap, so you can say you've been jaded, but in a different context. Congratulations.
By the way, she grew it. Okay, I would like to honestly thank you, each and every one of you officers, for all your hard work. It's heartfelt. Seriously, I'm going to stand here because I really appreciate you. We know you put your life on the line each and every time you're out on the road. I know we don't have enough of you out there, and the commission struggles all the time to try to figure out how to do that, how to make sure that you feel valued. But please understand and know that from the bottom of our hearts, we do appreciate and recognize everything that you do. So thank you, thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Anything else, commissioners? Great, thank you. Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on to citizens' concerns.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I, as a citizen, just make a note for those watching and for those in the room, if you hear a little extra background noise, it's because we are sharing this morning, we are sharing our commission space with voting. So every time you hear a ding, that's a ballot being cast. We thank our poll workers back there for being on the job and for sharing with us. So please pardon the extra background noise as people are out there exercising their voice.
Thank you. So next, item nine is citizens' concerns. Citizens wishing to speak shall limit their comments to three minutes. Just a quick reminder, no action may be taken. And is there anyone present in the chambers that would like to come forward? And if so, please come forward. Yes, Mr. Nildoki. Three minutes, just a real quick reminder. Thank you for being here, Nell. Always good to see you.
Good morning.
Morning. Thank you.
After the fire this summer, we got a huge accumulation of trees that were removed that stored in the road yard in Rodarte. And there was an ad in the paper this week that any of us that are elderly, and I don't know if there was a, how elderly, but said that we could put in a bid on this firewood. Now, is this a bid against our neighbors? Or is this just signing up to get a delivery? It wasn't clear, and I was wondering if anybody, anybody knows.
Madam Chair, if I could talk to Mr. Silke offline, I can give him all the details.
That would be great.
The what?
Our Commissioner, Commissioner O'Donnell, which is in your district, will talk to you offline and give you some information in regards to that.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, anyone else present that would like to speak? No? Okay, how about anyone online that's viewing? Please unmute yourself, raise your hand. Okay, and I believe we've got Marcia Gonzalez that would like to speak. And I'm sorry, I know you have another part of your last name, my apologies. For some reason, I'm forgetting the details there. Please go ahead. Marcia. I think we're trying to unmute you on this end, is that correct? Okay, just, okay, if you'll unmute yourself, please.
Now, can you hear me?
Yes, good to see you. And please, proceed.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Chair V. Hill, Vice Chair Brush, Commissioner O'Donnell. I'm Marcia Gonzalez. I am from El Prado, and I'm president of ABM Gonzalez Enterprises. Wanted to thank everyone who has been involved in preparing these final drafts of the resolution regarding the Juanay Gonzalez Memorial Agricultural Center. That's a facility that my family has long been involved with. It's item number 10, sorry, 12C on your agenda. First, regarding that item, I did submit written comments via email, and I would ask that county staff submit my written comments into the administrative record for this matter. I will provide some very brief recap of what the comments were about. The first thing is I urge the commission to adopt version number two of the resolution, which designates three organizations to basically have a seat on the agricultural facility board. And that would be Taos Soil and Water Conservation, Farm Bureau, Farm and Livestock Bureau, and the Taos County Fair Board. Those are organizations that have been instrumental for more than 20 years, actually more than 30 years, in making the Ag Center a reality and in keeping it functioning at its highest level. I also urge that the commission request that the resolution number two be revised to allow those three organizations to nominate the individuals that are going to represent them for the commission's consideration. As it is now, the way it reads, it could be that anybody who just pays their dues for one of those three organizations would be eligible, regardless of whether they are active members or actually know what the concerns are of the ag community. Fourth, neither of the versions of the resolution designate the County Extension Service Office as the facility manager. The County Extension Office has been the facility manager for more than 23 years, at no cost to the county. There had been basically no public discussion of what the justification is for not having the County Extension Office continue to be the facility manager. They know the facility, they know the ag community, they know the general community, they know what the capabilities and also the limitations are on the use of the facility, and really are the most qualified, again, at a huge saving to the county. And fifth, if the commission is not willing to designate the County Extension Office at this time in the resolution, the resolution now says that the county could contract with a private manager or designate a county employee to serve as the facility manager. Use of the word private manager.
Marcia, I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but the three minutes are up. My apologies.
Thank you. Just to wrap up, use of the word private would eliminate any public agency such as NMSU, UNM, or any other public agency, governmental agency, from being considered as the manager. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the information. Okay, anyone else online that would like to speak? Okay. Yes, can you please state your name? I'm sorry, I don't see it on here.
Yes, I'm Nadine V. Hill.
Yes, please, proceed. You've got three minutes, please.
Okay, I'm Nadine V. Hill, and I am the Director of Taos International School. And good morning, Chair and Commissioners. I would just like to take this opportunity to just talk a little bit about the Ag Facility. When the Ag Facility, the Agricultural Center, I should say, the One Eye Building, was managed by the, by the facility board that was in place at the time, it was really easy to call them and make arrangements for us to be able to reserve the building and utilize special events that we had here at the school. Being that we don't have a gym or a big building to host our events, we would call over the building, the Ag Building, and they would give us dates. And we were able to reserve the building, like I mentioned, to have our school events, which is pretty awesome. And now tried to contact the county to see about scheduling our winter concert, and have just come, a lot of barriers. There's time delays, or I can't reach anyone. So my recommendation would be that the facility, the Ag Facility, also still continue with the board managing the Ag Building. We, again, we utilized it as our big event center, and our parents loved it. We took care of it when we would go and present our different events, like I mentioned, winter concerts, the super cups, little graduations that we have. I am a starter support here in Taos with our focus on dual language, international bachelors. We are located at 118 Estes Road, and it's just awesome. I have a total of 176 students, kindergarten through A3. So it's just an awesome, we have a big facility. And again, just to mention, it was so awesome to call and make arrangements to reserve the building, to have our nice, big events, because we don't have a big building. And I would like to see how we can do it together with the county, if that's what I have to do. And if anybody can give me information on who do I reach out there? I've been trying, I forget any response from anybody, of who to call to be able to schedule our winter concert that's coming up in about less than eight weeks. And, but again, my recommendation would be that the facility board would continue to manage the Ag Building, that would be awesome. Thank you.
And thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak that's online? One more? Okay, Julie K. V. Hill, Romero?
Hello, Chair, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Julie K. V. Hill Romero. I am the president of the Taos County Fair Board Association, and also served on the Ag Facility Board. And I would like to make a few comments about some of the concerns I have in regards to management of the Agricultural Center, the Juanay Gonzalez Agricultural Building. I feel like the board that was in place and the processes that were in place to ensure functionality and upkeep of the Juanay Gonzalez Building and management ran very smoothly. And I would like to also recommend that those key agencies, Soil and Water Conservation, Taos County Fair Board Association, the Extension Office, key members that are involved in day-to-day business with agencies that reach out to utilize this facility, continue to manage the property so that we can provide the best outcome for all community members that are interested in utilizing the facility. And also would like to recommend that at some point, the commission meet with the Ag Facility Board to talk about all of the things that were being completed and done to manage that facility, to come up with the best outcome for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, I don't see anyone. Okay, I don't see anyone else. Vice Chair, you don't see? Okay, great, thank you for the public comments. Let's move on to item 10, Presentations. And A is 2023 Taos County Employee Benefits Renewal Update. And with us is LaMestria Davis, Senior Accountant, Executive of POMS. Palms, is that proper?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I want to thank you for allowing me to be here. I did bring you some Krispy Kremes all the way from Albuquerque, so I will leave that for you to enjoy. So do you guys have a copy of the presentation?
Not a, actually, a copy, but it's on the screen.
Awesome.
Thank you for asking.
You're welcome. So I will be presenting to you the renewal results of your employee benefits. I work closely with your HR team, Gina, Wendy, and the young ladies, and they're awesome. These renewals will take effect January 1st, 2023. So during this discussion, I will be going over the Blue Cross Blue Shield Medical Renewal, Delta Dental, the Vision with Superior, and Vision Care Direct, Life and Disability through Mutual Omaha, and then the Employee Assistance Program and Wellness Initiative with the Solutions Group. For your Blue Cross Blue Shield renewal, you did go, previously last year, as you recall, you were with Presbyterian. The increase was really high last year, so we did go out to bid on your behalf, and you decided January 2022 to move to Blue Cross Blue Shield. Palms was able to negotiate that renewal for you guys, and we went from self-insured, level-funded with Presbyterian to fully insured with Blue Cross Blue Shield. In that negotiation, we did negotiate a nine-and-a-half renewal increase. And the good news today, the increase that I negotiated with Blue Cross came in at four-and-a-half percent effective January 1st, 2023. I work closely with the account manager at Blue Cross, Lori Bell. You do have a triple option. We did introduce a health savings account this year. That particular plan, right now, it's 2,800 due to IRS regulations. That individual deductible is increasing to $3,000, that's automatic. And then the family deductible is going to increase to $6,000. So that is the only change that's going to occur on the plans this coming January. Also, part of the negotiation was a wellness fund. Previously, Blue Cross gave $15,000 for your wellness initiative, and we were able to get that increase, another $5,000 to $20,000. So that is the best news of the day, because I know we were trying to figure out what we're going to do, but we knew we were going to get at least nine-and-a-half percent, no more than nine-and-a-half percent. There are some value-added benefits with Blue Cross. You do get an extra three employee assistant programs, three sessions, up to three sessions. They also include a weight loss program, diabetes and hypertension programs. There is a Blue Cross member discount along with a fitness discount program, and MD Live virtual visits. And those benefits are available for those who are enrolled on the Blue Cross Blue Shield plan. On the next page, this is your claims experience summary. As you can see, January and February 2022, there are no claims for medical, and that's because the runover going from Presbyterian and to Blue Cross, there's a couple of month lag. So that's why March is a little higher because of that lag in processing claims. So the total medical, January through August, is $248,000. The drug costs through August is $212,000. Excuse me, the total for medical is $868,000, and the drug claims is $212,000, which is a total of $1,081,000. When your employees use the network, in-network with Blue Cross Blue Shield, the savings going to a Blue Cross provider is $313,000, and then there's a physician network savings of $250,000. So as you can see, your prior medical claims from January 2021 through December 2021, you had eight large claims last year. Through August of this year, there's only two. So that helped definitely with your renewal with Blue Cross, because there are six claims that are not included in the renewal. So on page five, the medical cost summary, this is just a side-by-side of your current and renewal, the individual rates. Each plan on the left-hand side includes your enrollment for each of those coverages in a total, and this is just the breakdown of how much each tier would cost during the, currently and at renewal. And just a reminder, you do have Cobra administered by Blue Cross Blue Shield, and there is a monthly admin fee for that of $75. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask me at any time.
I have a quick question. The 4.9% is that the increase will be to the employee directly? Is that both? Is it shared?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
That is correct.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. On the next page, on page six, a side-by-side of the plan, just an overview. This is not every detail of each plan, but as you see, you highlighted the HSA 3000, those are the two changes that are going to take place January 1st to the individual and family deductibles. On page seven is the dental renewal. You guys are actually, and they gave a rate pass, so there's no changes to the Delta Dental rates, so you have another year with no changes with Delta. On your vision coverage, you do have two vision options, one with Superior Vision and one with Vision Care Direct. Superior Vision, you were in a rate guarantee already, and Vision Care Direct gave a rate pass. So again, no changes to either of your vision plans. On page nine, and the subsequent pages after that, this is just an overview of your Mutual Omaha life insurance. You do have basic life and accidental death and dismemberage coverage. They did give another rate pass, a two-year rate pass. So no plan changes, no rate changes for the next two years through December 31st, 2024. We were able to, initially, that second column for law enforcement was just law enforcement, and it now has been extended to the detention center. That was effective January 2022, that made that change. There was no change in the rates to make that change. So we were able to offer that additional coverage to those set of employees. On the voluntary life, there's no changes to that on the next page, and that's just an overview on what the rates cost if they decided to add additional life insurance outside of what the county is paying for, for an individual, and they can get that coverage for their family members as well. Short-term disability, no changes in that as well. You guys, again, are in a rate guarantee for that coverage along with the long-term disability, that's on page 12. You do, part of when we left Presbyterian, they do have a relationship with the Solutions Group, and we were able to keep that relationship going with the Solutions Group to offer employee assistance, a separate employee assistance program. So you do have that, you have EAP with Mutual Omaha, you have EAP with Blue Cross, and you also have a standalone EAP. And I know they've come out this year for a couple of incidents that occurred, and this is an overview of what the cost is annually per employee and per the 207 employees. And I am almost done. So the contributions for 2023, the current structure we have is the county pays 90% for employee-only coverage and 70% for the family. We also have HSA contributions, again, that was introduced this year in 2022, and you currently have it set up where you're giving $1,000 to those who enroll in the HSA plan, and it's given out $250 per quarter. And that is because, in case someone leaves, we're not front-loading $1,000 and then they leave, because once they have that money, it's theirs, it's an individual savings account, and if they leave, they take it with them. So just keep that in mind. So our intention is to leave that as is and not make any changes going forward for that. This year, because there are minimum changes, we are doing a passive open enrollment. That is scheduled for Wednesday, November 9th, here in the chambers, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And we're actually going to do a health fair. So we're going to have several vendors set up, all the medical carriers and some other carriers, set up with tables and information, and will be available that entire day to answer questions directly to the employees that they may have on the different coverages. And then we do open enrollment through our online platform that Palms pays for on behalf of the county. So we'll continue doing that, where you go online and select your benefit coverage. Do you have any questions for me?
Ms. Davis, I do not. Commissioners, Vice Chair?
Madam Chair and Ms. Davis, I don't have any questions. I just want to say thank you for working hard with Gina and our HR team. A 4.9% increase is pretty remarkable these days. You know, I remember last year, year before, getting a little freaked out by 19%, 34%, like, there are lots of scary numbers out there. So appreciate you all working as a team to keep us within something that we can afford and keeps our team here at the county healthy. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
I would like to echo that as well. Thank you very much. And I know, Gina, often we don't give credit, enough credit to our team, but obviously they're working very hard to make sure that we do have the benefits that we need and that we keep them as low as possible. So thank you for that. Commissioner, anything? No? Great, thank you, once again.
You're welcome. Enjoy the donuts.
Oh, yes. Appreciate that. Okay, next, we have a presentation of Taos Operations and Maintenance Facility, Micro Transit Deployment in Taos. And with us is Anthony, and is it Mortiato? How do I pronounce your last name?
Mortiaro.
Mortiaro. I like to pronounce everything in Spanish. So my husband tells me that everything is Spanish. Okay, welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the County Commission. It's been a while since the RTD has been able to come to a County Commission meeting and present on topics that, and issues that are going on with the RTD within Santa Fe County, I mean Taos County. Today, we're presenting on our new transit operations and maintenance facility. And after we're done with that presentation, we also will present on our micro-transit project as well. And with me today is Bryce Gibson. He is our Planning and Projects Manager. And joining us via Zoom is John Gerard. John is our Architect Design Engineer for the Taos Operations and Maintenance Facility. Like to start off with, good, she's got the right slide up there. This is a picture of our current facility here in Taos. It's at 1032 Dia Lane. And we acquired this facility when we took over the Taos Chili Line that was operated by the town of Taos back in 2015. And this is a three-quarter acre site. As you can see, there's a six-bay metal building, and there's a trailer towards the back of it. Can we stay on that slide, previous slide? Anyway, when we took over this facility, the town had simply been operating out of there with about six employees and several buses. The minute we took over, we totally inundated the site with about 19 vehicles and substantial number of employees that are based out of the northern area here. So we had engaged with our architects to develop a plan for a new maintenance facility. And in order to accomplish that, it was going to require a much larger site. So we did acquire a new site here in Taos County that's on, it's on Salazar Road, 1327 Salazar Road. And it's a six-acre site, and the plan that you'll see is going to be utilizing about four-and-a-half acres of that site. The facility that's been designed and ready to go out to bid, and I'll talk a little bit more about that towards the end of the presentation, is over 9,200 square feet. And right now, the engineer's estimate for total project is 9.7 million. I'm going to turn the presentation over to John Gerard, our architect, and he's going to go over some of the elevations here and some of the attributes of the site and the sustainability provisions that have been designed into the project. And then when John's done, I will come back and close out with the schedule for the project here. John?
Okay, thanks, Tony. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you, Madam Chairman and members of the Taos County Commission. I just give you a brief overview of our project and some of the sustainability aspects of it. This slide here, you see, is sort of a bird's eye view of our proposed development. The buildings there on the right are the maintenance facility, which is two bay, bus maintenance, repair bay, a wash platform to the left of that, which is under a canopy. And then to the right of the maintenance building is the operations building, which houses the drivers' areas, the dispatch, and customer service. And then around the site, you see are all the parking spaces for the buses and a kind of a grid structure you see over the buses there on the left is a structure that will support the bus charging equipment. So some of the fleet, electric buses, and so we have charging equipment for six of those buses. There. Next slide. And this is more of an eye-level view of the facility, looking at the building in the background and the bus parking area. Next slide. So this is the floor plan of the building. As I said, this is the maintenance building on the left, which has the two bays for the bus repairs, and then support spaces are rounding those bays, the parts, room, tire equipment, and tool storage. And then to the right is the operations side of the building. That's the drivers' area, the larger area you see on the left of the building, and then toilets, showers, office areas, and then a public lobby, which, that's how the public enters on the south side of the building. Next slide. Again, the site plan, I thought I described that pretty well, the maintenance and operations building on the right. As Tony had said, we are utilizing about four-and-a-half acres of the site for the project, which leaves about an acre and a half for future development, which could be housing, workforce housing, or park-and-ride, or a combination of those. Next slide. Again, kind of another bird's eye view of the project. Next slide. And then these are the building elevations. We're using a very simple design architecturally to keep the building massing to a simple design that's more compatible with some of the architecture in the area. The maintenance building itself will be a exposed concrete masonry with like a tan color, and then the operations building, which is the lower building, will have. Next slide. And then you see the same, this is the, on the left, per slide, is the maintenance facility and the lower building. And the lower building on the right is the operations with lots of natural light, a lot of window area into the buildings, both buildings, and a lot of skylight. This is a, a slide or a photo of a similar example of what we'll be doing for the electric buses. This is the charging, the overhead of charging equipment that we'll be installing for the six parking area, parking spaces. Next slide. So just briefly to talk about some of the sustainable aspects on the project, next slide. As far as solar. We, as I said, lots of natural light bringing in the building to reduce the use of artificial light. We're also inviting the building to support future TV panels on the building and potentially over the parking areas. Next slide. Water, obviously a very important issue in New Mexico. And many, many of the, the design features that were incorporated for water conservancy. All the water on the site will be collected in ponding areas to maintain the runoff as required by, you know, state runoff control. Plumbing fixtures in the building will be low use water fixtures to reduce the demand on water. When we build the future bus wash equipment. We'll have a 90% recycled water design. And then landscaping materials are very low water use. And then, as I said, we will be collecting and conserving the runoff water through ponding and water separators. Next slide. Energy, some of the energy efficiency design that we're incorporating is, again, some of the mass use of natural light or solar, direct solar gain. Daylight sensors to control daylight. The light levels from daylight, natural light are at a level we can reduce or turn off all the electrical lighting. LED fixtures will be all the lighting fixtures, as well as exterior lighting to night, sky control, so that we don't have any night pollution, light pollution at night. And then a monitoring system that will be able to document these savings. Next slide. The interior of the building and, and, you know, the areas that the, they'll be employee occupied were very important to have a lot of air and ventilation that make sure that, you know, or any issues from some of the operations in the building. We're potentially going to look at a used oil, water, oil heating system to heat the bay area, the repair bays. And then the HVAC systems are very energy efficient, evaporative cooling type system with, with low energy use. Next slide. And some of the materials that, most of the materials that we're using on the building are very energy efficient. Either recycled or pre-consumer or post-consumer material and locally sourced materials, pottery and concrete are both products that are in the house area that can be easily obtained and procured for the project. In the building as well, we'll have areas for recycling of paper and plastic and that, those kinds of materials. Next slide. Again, back to indoor air quality, we'll have CO monitors throughout the building. The, the equipment in the buses and the repair bays will all have exhaust reels so that we minimize any CO through the, through both the building, the maintenance building and the operations. And again, a lot of natural light so that we can make use of that, reduce the amount of artificial light needed, as well as very heavily insulated walls. Skylights will be bringing in natural light, but they're also insulated so that we don't lose heat or cooling. And then finally, low C, which is a carpeting and paints and those sort of things, elements that have low volatile organic compounds to maintain the indoor air quality. And I think that pretty much maps up the, the design portion of the presentation. We're going to pack the Tony.
Thank you, John. Before I continue on, I'd like to see if there's any questions of John regarding his presentation.
Commissioners, Vice Chair.
Madam Chair, and thank you both for the presentation. I just have a comment, which is that I very much appreciate the thoughtfulness around energy use, water consumption, the careful selection of materials, the plants, hopefully shade trees and native grasses. These choices that you both just outlined are healthy for our planet and healthy for the people who will be working there. So I appreciate that very much in your presentation and I hope that that can help us as, as a government look to this as a model for how we should be building going forward. So thank you for all the considerations around climate that you're including.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. Several weeks ago, we presented to the Taos Town Planning Commission. And one of the commissioners said, this building's so green, you can eat it. Appreciate the comment.
And, and I have a comment in regards. When I was reviewing the packet over the weekend, it really was impressive to, to see that, as you stated, Vice Chair, thoughtfulness into this project. So much appreciated. I, I was really excited to see that. Look forward to the, to the completed project. Yes.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning.
Morning.
Are you going to have natural gas or will the building be entirely electric?
No, there'll be natural gas to the building for some of the heating elements that are included in it.
I, I'm just wondering if you're aware that California's banned natural gas stoves effective, I don't know, in a few, few years that, because they do, natural gas contributes to especially stoves. But just was curious. And then where is the exact location of this facility?
The exact location is at the intersection of Salazar Road and SDS Road. It's catty cornered from the Ag Center and next to the town's disco course. So there's a six acre parcel that we purchased from Mark Arvitz. He had a 27 acre parcel for residential development there. We purchased six of those acres from him.
Okay, thank you.
We're at 100% design on the project, so we're going to be advertising an invitation for bid here. Hope to get a number of bidders and have the Board of Directors award the bid in December. Anticipate construction starting in January. It's about a one-year project for construction and hope to be occupying it in January or February of 2024. Seems a long way off, doesn't it?
It'll pass.
But anyway, that, that's our plan and hope to also have it bid in, in budget. But the way the bidding environment is, we've, we've been seeing bids for projects and the state has as well, coming in as much as 17, 19% above their estimates. So we're all keeping our fingers crossed here. And that pretty, that concludes the presentation on this facility. We'd like to just take a few more minutes and talk about our micro transit project and expansion here in Taos County. So I'm going to ask Bryce to come forward.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Bryce Gibson and I am the Planning and Projects Manager for the RTD. And I'm managing the implementation of this project. So a little bit of background on what we're trying to do here. The RTD operates three demand zones within our service area. One here in the town of Taos, one within a 15 mile radius of the Espanola Transit Center within the counties of Rio Riva and Santa Fe. And there's a smaller zone within that that serves Cipohque and Nambay Pueblos. So the software that we use right now to deliver the service is rather antiquated and limited in its capabilities. So passengers are required to call in to book service. They have to book within our business hours and it's a minimum of 24 hours in advance. Our dispatchers are spending most of their time booking trips, talking to customers, trying to arrange the itineraries for the day. So this new software that we plan to implement will take care of a lot, a lot of these issues and streamline the process. So passengers will be able to download an app to their phone. They'll be able to book trips at any time on their own convenience. And we will also have a dispatching platform that will take a lot of the burden off of our dispatchers and will do a lot of the booking through an algorithm. So that will handle itinerary building so dispatchers can focus on efficient delivery of the system, of the service. So if we go to the last slide of the presentation here. Thank you. So on the right here, you'll see an image of the demand zone or the micro transit zone that we plan to implement. A little bit of background on this particular zone. The zone right now is currently a three-quarter of a mile radius around the Chili Line, which is the fixed route that serves the primary corridor through the town of Taos. So we partnered with NMDOT previously during the pandemic to increase the size of the zone to two miles around the Chili Line fixed route. And then this micro transit zone takes that even further and expands service even further out. So as you see here, service has expanded further north towards Blueberry Hill Road. It includes the airport and all these areas around the airport neighborhoods where we see demonstrated need for transit services, where, you know, service was previously not provided. So the way the service will work, you see this outer zone here that's delineated with a red line. And then there's the gray inner zone. So passengers will be able to book service from the outer zone into the inner zone. And then from the inner zone into the outer zone. And then anywhere within the outer zone, as long as the trip distance minimum is met, three-quarters of a mile. So this is a change from what we're doing right now. Currently, passengers can book anywhere within the, the area. We want to make sure though that our services are used as efficiently as possible. So if passengers have access to fixed route service, they can take advantage of that. And if they don't, they'll have micro transit as an option for them. We plan to launch the service in November. We're going to start with a beta group with the mobile app. So we'll work out any of the kinks previous to the broader launch for the rest of our riders. The service hours are going to be Monday through Friday from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. We do plan to expand this in the future into evenings and weekends. But as I'm sure you're very aware, recruitment and retention is a huge issue for, for all of us. So we want to be sure that we have the adequate workforce to be able to supply that service. Fares are going to remain a dollar for general public riders. ADA certified riders who are unable to use the fixed route will continue to be able to ride for free. We are also implementing a new fare for the airport. So trips tuned from the airport will be $5. Passengers will again be able to book service through the mobile app. However, we also wanted to be sure that passengers who don't have smartphones, who are unbanked, still have all the options available to them that they have now. So they'll still be able to call in to book trips. We can book trips from that way. And then cash fare will also be accepted onboard in addition to payments through stored credit card information, debit cards or prepaid cards. And then again here, so really excited for the flexibility that the service will be able to provide. We anticipate being able to allow passengers to book service one hour in advance. Currently, that's 24 hours in advance is the earliest you can book. So the ability to book spontaneous travel is something that we're really excited to introduce to our passengers and hope that will improve quality of life. And then briefly, I'd just like to, if we go back to the previous slide, go over the, how the app works. So passengers can create an, an account by downloading the app from the, from the App Store through Google or, or Apple. All that's required is an email address. But we would prefer also to receive a phone number. That way it's just easier to communicate. So once your account is created, you would set up a pickup and drop off location. Another really exciting feature for this app is that passengers will be able to store favorite locations. So it's really easy to book trips to and from destinations that you travel to frequently. Once that's selected, you will choose your trip time. So you can either choose to depart at a certain time or arrive at a certain time. Then again, you would go in and pay your fare. So one thing that we're really excited to introduce with this new technology is bundled fares. I want to encourage ridership and loyalty to the program. So passengers will be able to book batches of fares for a discounted rate using a wallet within the app. Once the trip is booked, prior to your departure, you'll receive notifications through the app, either through text message or push notifications telling you when your vehicle's arriving and when it's arrived. And then once you're onboard, you can track the progress of your vehicle and see your ETA. And then once the trip is concluded, you can provide feedback. So this will be really useful to RTD. We'll be able to see, you know, if people are having issues with their trip, what those issues are. A lot of things that are really not probably being communicated right now. So we'll be able to really improve the service and provide a higher level of service to our riders. One thing I do want to note, these service parameters, the expanded zone, the hour ahead booking windows, we're holding off on that again until we have adequate staff. I think the last thing we want to do is introduce a new service that people are excited about and want to take advantage of and not be able to, you know, meet those needs and, and meet the demand. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. That was great. It's interesting how this app is going to work. And I'm glad that those that don't have a smartphone have other options. So thank you for keeping that. I attended a couple of, well, actually one meeting that was held here in Taos for the public. And it was really interesting to, to see public actually come in and give feedback on what's working, what's not working and, and the routes, you know, how easily they can access these routes. So that was really helpful. That was really great. My concern is that, and I, and I know there's logic behind where the routes are. But obviously there are locations in Taos, like Peniasco Cuesta, the rural areas that don't, I don't believe have access at this time. Is that a future plan to add those in, those areas?
So right now, those areas are served with fixed route transit. But we do see a really unique use case for our area. It's very rural. So fixed route transit doesn't always work and demand service may work a little bit better. So we would like to launch this service and then see how it performs. And then we do have plans to expand in the future, depending on how, how it's received.
That makes sense. Thank you. Any questions? Vice Chair?
Yeah. Madam Chair, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gibson. As someone who has half a car, I share a car. I'm really excited about this. And you did answer my main question, which the chair referred to too, is like folks who do not have a smartphone or do not use the App Store, that they will continue to have access is, is key. So thank you for that. I, two things, I would love to invite you to come back to this, this location, to this body after you've got some results from the pilot and let us know how it's going. So maybe early next year, you could come back and tell us, you know, what you found out, out there. And my question is just simply like, once the, once you launch the pilot, the test next month, how do people find out that it's going on and how do people access? I know, I know you have to be careful about like going out big if you don't necessarily have the capacity to execute on it. I totally get that. But just wondering how you're going to encourage people to, to test it.
So initially, we'll do outreach with specific customers we know have the technology at hand to actually use the mobile app. hand to actually use the mobile app. For most of our riders, we think they're going to continue to call in to book trips, so they're really not going to see a big change in how their trips are performed and how the service operates for them. But we do plan on doing lots of outreach. We've actually held one meeting here in Taos specifically for the microtransit service and had some, you know, really good dialogue. We had some books from U&amp;M show up to that. So, but primarily, you know, just contacting our customers, the ones that we have existing, and making sure they understand what's happening first.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions regarding the buses and if the buses are all going to be electric, is that correct? I don't know if you can...
Sure. Yes, so initially, we were awarded funding from the Federal Transit Administration to procure 10 battery electric buses. Six of those are going to be the larger 40-foot transit buses, and then we'll have four smaller vehicles, which will perform the microtransit service. We do plan on expanding our electric fleet or our zero emission fleet. We actually just kicked off a meeting to get our zero emission transition plan underway, which we hope to have early next year. So it may not be electric necessarily, but we will have some low or no emission vehicle providing service over, you know, the coming five, 10, 15 years as we transition our fleet out.
Great, thank you. And another question regarding employees. How many additional employees will the new facility bring on? What are we looking at?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, let me just clarify one thing, that when Bryce talked about the 10 electric vehicles and what have you, there's six electric buses that are the 40-footers. Three of those are going to be staged in Espanola, three will be here in Taos. And then, as he indicated, there's going to be a number of electric vans. Our timeline for that, because there's a long lead time for ordering and getting those vehicles in, we won't have them until 2024. So it's, again, over a year plus out for that, but as is indicated, once we get our zero emission transition plan developed and everything, you will see a clear roadmap of where the district is heading in terms of its propulsion technology for its buses and vehicles over the next 10, 15, 20 years. Terms of employees, the new facility has been designed to accommodate an increased staff of about 35 employees in total. Right now, we have roughly 19 employees that service northern area here. So we expect, you know, that over time, that that workforce is going to grow due to route expansions, due to more frequency or additional routes being added into the northern area. In addition, we'll be adding employees for fleet maintenance and so on as well. So that's sort of our crystal ball in terms of what we see happening, how we design this facility to service the next 15 to 20 years here in the Taos area. When the facility that's been designed is designed to be expanded to add another maintenance bay, and also to add a automated wash facility at some time in the future as well. So there's been thought put into it for how those expansions can happen in the future.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may read the question in the chat from Joaquin Argüello. Being that New Mexico is one of two constitutionally bilingual states, will the app be available in both languages? What methods are planned to make these services just as easily accessible for people who do not have smartphones, computers, or such technologies such as elderly visually impaired?
Thank you, Commissioners. So yes, the app is going to be translated into Spanish, so Spanish speakers will be able to use the app as well. And then again, to reiterate, riders who don't have smartphones will still be able to book in the traditional ways that they do now, and they'll still be able to pay with cash if they don't have those options.
Great, thank you. That was a great question. I'm glad. It's going to be in Spanish, the option.
There's two more, and I'm just going to read the third one. Should the cost of the ride to the airport be more in line with correlating costs of existing for-profit transportation services such as Lyft, Uber, being that those flying into a local airport most likely have the financial means to pay more than $5?
That was our thinking as well, but again, we're a public transit agency, so we want to be sure that people have access to our services regardless of income level. But we do see, you know, that more people coming to and from the airport are going to be visitors. They do have that disposable income, so $5 is sort of a good balancing point for that.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'd like to thank you. Is there any other questions, Commissioners or comments? I'd like to thank you all for your presentation. It was a great presentation overall, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, so moving on, let's see, we are, let me get my bearings here. We're on 10, Item C, a presentation of the American Rescue Plan Act grant update process. And it says Nina Gonzalez, owner, is it Era Don Consulting, and Lisa O'Brien, Executive Director of Task, I'm sorry, Task Community Foundation here with us. Lisa?
Good morning.
Every time I see you, I know good things are happening.
Okay, thank you so much.
Good morning. Hi, everyone. How are you? Good morning. You all can hear me?
Nina, here to present and just give an update on where we are with the ARPA grant project. Do you want to jump in first, Nina?
Sure. I'm just going to kind of briefly introduce and give a quick summary of the historically where we're at and where we're at today, and then I'll turn it back over to you, Lisa. So good morning, Chairperson Beal and Task County Commissioners. I think most of you know me, but again, my name's Nina Gonzalez, and my consulting company is Era Don LLC. We were contracted by Task County and the Lor Foundation to really facilitate a transparent and community-driven process by which to disperse a portion of the first tranche of the Task County American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funding. As you remember, we held a very large community stakeholder listening session in order to ensure transparency and that that process would be community-driven. We had over 65 people in attendance, schools, nonprofits, key businesses, the political and governmental sector, so we were really happy with the turnout of that. Using that feedback, we worked with each of you Commissioners to design the dispersment process, including the categories of dispersment, the award amounts, and the application design. We really commend the, all of those community stakeholders, the Task County staff, and each of you Commissioners for working hard to ensure that this project's really been based on a collective and collaborative process. Just quickly to remind everyone of the brief summary of what came out of that, there's 1.6 million available in this first tranche that's available to the community. The outcomes were that 1 million was designated for a larger-scale community housing effort. 100,000 was designated to support community data and/or technical support for that housing project, and 500,000, a half a million, was designated for community dispersment to projects that foster economic growth, general pandemic recovery, and done in a way that really fosters equity. That's really at the heart of the ARPA funding at the federal level. So today, we're really here to update you on the process of the dispersment of this half million. So we're here to discuss really just this 500,000. The two categories to apply for within that 500,000, again, this was all driven by the stakeholders and the Commissioners, all of you, was economic resiliency. This includes the housing, small business, the whole nonprofit sector, education. It includes early childhood or summer after-school programming, adult education, parent support. It also includes the food and agricultural sector. The second bucket was health and community welfare. So this is your behavioral health, your public health work, anything that's preventing or responding to violence, general medical care, access to any of these services. It also includes anything around community database for shared referrals, but this is really your public health bucket. So those were the two. Economic resiliency and health and community welfare are the two categories to which you can apply. Originally, the award amounts were set at a minimum of 50,000 and a maximum of 250, and we'll talk a little bit about what we're thinking on that today. In terms of the application and reporting, the community request was really to make this process as simple and as transparent as possible and to ensure that the process by which Task County can disperse to community projects, it was an opportunity to use these ARPA funds to look at how can we really, as a whole, simplify this process between Task County and various community projects. In addition, there was feedback to ensure that we really promote and have equal access to some of our outlying communities in the county, and part of the Commissioner's decision was to award additional application points to such areas. Lastly, the final aspect of this contract was to explore graded funding models, so looking at how we can leverage these ARPA dollars with other funding that's coming down the pipeline and that's out there to weave together a more sustainable or more resilient economic landscape for our county. This component, we briefly looked at in the spring, and we will cycle back to it as we look to the dispersment of the second tranche of ARPA funding. In terms of the timeline, we hope to announce this application this summer, and largely, we're here today to update you on the timeline. We were set, we had designed the application, we were set to release this summer, and we were approached by a generous offer from the Task Community Foundation and Lisa to attempt to design a system by which they would serve as the dispersment agency for the community funding. This is their specialty, that's what they do every day, and we foresaw that this could be a huge boon for the community in that they're really set up and designed for this work, whereas for, and it also lessens the burden on Task County staff, so it can be, could be a win-win for the community and the county. Working to navigate that service agreement took some time and delayed the process, but we had felt that the potential payoff of this has been well worth the wait. So that's really all. I just wanted to kind of, you know, bring us back to remembering where we have been and let you know where we're at now. At this point, I'm really going to turn it over to Lisa from the Task Community Foundation. She's going to review the new timeline, the service agreement. In addition, she'll cover any changes that they're hoping to make to the original project. I'm happy to answer any questions you have at this point or after this presentation about the process and/or the proposed timeline and changes. So thank you all. I just, lastly, would just say thank you for all of your dedication and patience in this process, to both the Commissioners, all of the Task County staff, to Task Community Foundation. A lot of people have come together to innovate and ensure that this funding works in the most impactful, can create the most positive impact on the community. So just want to thank people for that. And Lisa, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Great, thanks, Nina. So that's the overview. I'm going to echo what Nina said, that sometimes with these kinds of things, there's just such an urgency, and everyone wants to get there and get the money out and have things going. And I'm going to say it's just as important to kind of make sure we step back, catch our breath, make sure we're on the right path. The last thing any of us want to do is roll something out into community and then be in kind of this harried sort of, oh, wait, we didn't think about that. So as a partner, I want to just, again, compliment the county, and I want to do a nod to County Manager, Herramio. It's taken a long time to get us to this point, and I'm so excited about it. I just think we have this opportunity right now to not just move ARPA funds out efficiently and effectively to benefit our community, but potentially to really use this as a platform to do additional work in communities. I'm very invested in making sure this project goes really, really well. So that being said, I want to assure everyone that we did our best to sort of put together what I think is a working calendar. Our scope of work document, I think, will really be kind of, we will be tweaking it as we go. It's the first time we've entered into this kind of contract as two entities, and again, I think there's just that place of trust and commitment to make it work. So what I believe was included in your packet for today is really our just, here's our working outline as of really last week. This is a push. My staff, I have a small staff, so we're doing our best to really crank this out right now. Where we are right now, we still have a couple, we still have a fair amount of work to do in terms of the actual application. I don't want to get into too much of that right here, but I want to say is it's with Nina's counsel, it's in conversation with Brent, and with my staff of really packaging what that application looks like. Again, the last thing we want to do is go out with an application and then have 10,000, 15,000 questions, and we go, oh, yeah, we didn't think about that. So we're really, I will say, Community Foundation right now is really kind of going, all right, we need to wait a couple more days to really get this notch out. So I think that this work plan schedule, I think, is completely doable. I did put a comment in there that we may have some inch room, squishy room cushion where we could move up the announcements. A lot of this depends on how many applications come in. If there's two grantees as opposed to 50 grantees, and this is where, you know, the county's really going to have some decision-making to do. So we're working on our end on this end. We will have a fairly robust ad schedule, which I think is, again, reflective of the extension out into some of our outlying communities. And because a lot of our nonprofit community has heard about this, they're just ready. So again, I think our piece is let's make sure we have everything ready to go, that we've thought through as many of the questions as we can, and then we jump in from there. Taos Community Foundation will be hosting what we're calling Technical Assistance Zoom Times. We made those available in the evening, we've made them available throughout the workday. Those will just be drop-ins. So what we've found to be most effective in those kinds of things is to just keep it really simple for nonprofits. It's a lot of what we're really tailoring this grant application and this process to be. So we've got numerous Zoom technical support things on the calendar. My staff is certainly available outside of those times as well. To just echo what Nina said, this is our work. This is what Taos Community Foundation does every day. So this is just another one of those grant applications that we're moving forward. So we're pushing out the press, and a lot of that'll start next week. So any, I'm completely available for questions.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. And Nina, thank you for the recap. That was very, very helpful. I only have one question and, of course, a comment, but the question is on the awareness. Once we, once we're ready with the application, what is the thought in regards to making sure that everyone knows it's available and, you know, and it's...
So again, I think a lot of the intent with this partnership is to lean into the work that the Community Foundation does in community. So we have, there's, you know, we have over 200 of our nonprofits are probably on our e-list, so that becomes part of that. It's just what we're going to do. The Chamber will get announcements, we'll go out in as many of those media points as we can to get those announcements out. I think the ad schedule is pretty robust. We've got the Taos News, we've got Papers in Questa. A lot of it will really be from what we craft together, and then it's going out on the county website, we're checking in with all of those other social media points. My experience has been, most nonprofits, when they know funding is available from a foundation, they got their ear on the ground. So I don't think we're going to have a problem with announcement out. I think what we need to be really clear on right now is let's build a very clear application that is exactly what is intended from the county, and that we're making sure we have all of the things built into it that we know need to be there. Back to sort of our partnership and scope of work, I fully intend to just probably pop in at a Commission meeting once a month to just sort of do updates. Again, a lot of this is going to depend on how many grants are out in community, and then I think we'll have conversations at that point about, you know, what the... And then I think we'll have conversations at that point about, you know, what those pieces are, that way you may be asking of grantees. You're getting a $250,000 grant that's a lot different than if you're getting a $50,000 grant. And that's where I think the, the knowledge and the expertise of the Community Foundation will assist in this to sort of help frame how we, how we look at a lot of that stuff.
Thank you Lisa, thank you for the partnership and thank you and Nina and the team for all the thoughtfulness and that's been put into this and our team on this end as well. Because I know that when we first heard of the, the money, I, I thought it was going to be really, really simple, you know, like just get it out. But you know, I'm glad that we've taken the time that we have and, and, you know, we've thought of, you know, the impact this could really have and we've thought of rated funding. We, I mean, we really have, I think, taken the time to really look at what we have in front of us and how this is going to be better served as we put this money out. And so I'm grateful to the team. I know we get a little impatient sometimes. I look at Commissioner Brush because she's always reminding us, we got to get this out. But truth be told that, that I really appreciate the thoughtfulness and, and just preparing so that we do this right.
Thank you.
Thank you, I do have some questions. I, I believe the 1.6 is, it's a little lower since we gave out money, so that's not an accurate amount.
What Ms. O'Brien was referring to, or Ms. Gonzalez, is the general first presentation that we had to you all, Ms. Gonzalez received a copy of that and it was the 1.6. And then where she had mentioned is through the stakeholder meetings, the number one thing that the stakeholders wanted is for us to help in the housing initiative and to set aside funds for that. That was clear. And then at one point, we did come before this body and say, okay, this is what we're going to do and set aside money for housing. And then, and then we dedicated 500,000 to go out to the grants. I know there's a lot of folks that are waiting for the grants. District eight is waiting for the grants to, I spoke with Jason yesterday. And we're happy and I'm thankful that Nina Gonzalez and her team and one set, her and one set, put a good stakeholder meeting together. We're still hearing positive feedback about that. And, and thanks to the Community Foundation for stepping up and helping with our capacity issues. This is a, a great partnership.
So will it actually be 500,000?
It's going to be 500,000.
Okay.
And then we're in the process of drawing down the second tranche, so we should have the second tranche in the next couple of weeks. And then we'll be able to have another down-the-road meeting of how much we're going to set aside off the second tranche.
Okay, we didn't have to spend the full amount to access the second?
No, they've changed the rules, so we've been working with the Treasury going on three, four weeks now. So they emailed yesterday that I should be able to draw it down now.
So my question is, if there is an overabundance of applications for the half a million, who decides who gets it?
Ms. Gonzalez has put together a review committee and the review committee will review all the applications, look at the guidance and then we'll have to make some hard decisions on the review committee. I don't know if you want to add anything to that Nina?
No, other than, I think that's correct, thank you. Other than part of the original stakeholder feedback in that effort to keep things really transparent and community-driven was to have a community-based review committee. In some ways, this, and Lisa can speak to this, it's in alignment with TCF in that you have a committee that looks at the application and ranks them so that we kind of have a broad perspective and can make it as equitable and fair as possible. So out of that committee, again, there might be some hard decisions to make. Now, we have some opportunities. If somebody comes and asks for 100,000 and the way the pieces of the puzzle come together, it seems like we might only be able to award them 50,000. You know, there's going to be, have to have some conversations about what can be workable budgets. Again, one of the benefits of bringing in Taos Community Foundation is that they have to do this kind of puzzle piecing and decision-making all the time. But it really is a hope that it's a very transparent and community-driven process, even in terms of designating who is awarded.
So the review committee, you've taken any decision-making out of the county commission?
No, no, it's actually the opposite. When we started this conversation, it was important for me from the Community Foundation that this is not our, this is not our decision. We're handling the application, we'll do all the packaging, we'll do all of this work that we've outlined. The, the review committee will be with the county. Taos Community Foundation will not be part of that. And that was something that was important for me, that I really wanted that to be separate. But I will say to Nina's point, when we have these kinds of, this is the magic. You're going to have more applications. You will have more requests for funding than you have. And we just know that that's what it is going in. So part of it is, you know, preparing your, your review committee with that knowledge right out of the gate and creating a system that you're making good choices as you go. I think the one piece that is a benefit that we, it's sort of, there may be an unintended benefit that we don't know yet, is that because those applications are coming into Community Foundation, we have eyes on those too. So even though we're going to hand them over and say, you give us the list of who's going to be funded, we're going to have our eye and ear on that. And I think that that's the other piece around leveraging funds that can be really exciting is we have philanthropic roots in this community, not just through Taos Community Foundation. So how do we help share those things if there's an application that comes in and we're looking at it going like, wow, there's an opportunity for all of us in another way to try and get that funded. So I think we, I'm open to that too in this process, that it won't just be the half a million that the county puts out. There may be some other ways we can put things forward to other funders.
Okay, thank you Madam Chair, a couple more questions?
Could I just speak to that, just to clarify one piece that I think is critical to know? The, the outcome from the commissioner meeting when we reviewed that stakeholder is that the review committee will come and make all their suggestions. All of that then goes to all of you all as commissioners. So you do have, you will get to see all of that before, and if you have any, the commissioners have the final say still. So, so all of that committee will?
Thank you. Is, will these be reimbursable? That's always been an issue with nonprofits. It, it's an outright grant and then we're still holding the money in our account and then that money goes to the Community Foundation that then disperses it? So we still have this money in our account?
We currently have the money in the, our account. At a future point in time, that money would be transferred over to Community Foundation and then they'll go ahead and disperse it out. That was one of the sticking points over the service agreement that we worked out with the attorneys. And we also, Nina's done a lot of research and then we also involved Joy Esparza, the new executive director for New Mexico Counties, who's kind of been the New Mexico Counties' go-to person on ARPA and getting these funds out, so.
Well, all right, so it will be dispersed when you decide, we decide which awards are done, we're holding that money. And then, Ms. O'Brien, your normal administrative fee is 8%? Is that, you're taking 8%, what is, what is the?
There's a flat fee of $50,000.
Okay, thank you. I think that's it, just the comment that I have been frustrated with how long this taken. I realize you're following everything and being very cautious and however the money was meant to get out fast and that hasn't happened. I'm wondering, other counties, you know, Mardi Chavez and all, are they taking this long? Is this normal? I know in like Albuquerque, they got that money out really fast.
I can't speak to the city of Albuquerque, but they are a home rule charter. By chance, I was looking at something that Berna Leo County just distributed grant funds yesterday, was Berna Leo County, I shouldn't say barely, was releasing their grants yesterday.
So it's kind of typical is what?
Right.
We're not?
No, we, we wanted to do a thoughtful approach to it as well. This is a new thing with working through procurement and how we got to the Community Foundation and, and legal counsel and, and procurement were scratching their heads on how we could accomplish this and then we worked through it.
Okay, I have not seen the timeline, I know Brent's going to send it. When are you going to have these, this contract signed? Has it been signed?
The contract with TCF was signed last week. And so officially on October 8th, so this was our next available time to present to the commission, so.
All right, thank you Madam Chair.
And we still have, Ms. Herramio, a reporting process that's required, right?
Right.
From the feds, right?
We still have a reporting process, so there is somewhat of a burden on TCF to collect the data that we need to turn around and use that in for our final report, so. So I know at one point that was part of our discussion too, is making sure we get the data and that was something on our finance end, that they wanted to make sure we had the backup documentation, so when we do report, that information is collected and it's collected upfront.
And I'm sure our staff is grateful for that, thank you. Is, I think it was mentioned earlier, the capacity here at the county, that was one of the things that we really considered. And so we're great, very grateful for Taos Community Foundation and the partnership. We know they do good work, we know they do good for the community. So we're, once again, thank you very, very much Nina. I, I have to tell you that, because I've kept up with this process and even though we get a little impatient, I really truly, and I know I said this earlier, but I want to say it again, appreciate the process and, and the thoughtfulness. I, I think the community will be much more grateful when they see the outcomes. Yes, Madam?
Yeah, I got one more question.
Vice Chair? Go ahead.
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you. And Nina, I just wanted to give you heartfelt thanks and appreciation for sticking with this and giving us such tremendous leadership from the start, where we knew this was going to be a big process and a big project if we were going to do it in a thoughtful way. And you absolutely set us down that path, really appreciate that partnership. And Lisa, really appreciate Taos Community Foundation coming in to help like the implementation of, of the project that's set forth. My hope is that we see some proposals that continue doing some of the best things in the community that are already working and then some new ideas for projects and proposals that we haven't seen before, but that will really help and that surprise us. So thank you both for your willingness to be our partners. I know we're not, we're not always the, we're not always easy to work with because we're government and it's hard. So thank you for your patience and your dedication. And Brent, just a comment for you, a request. I know that, you know, the, the amount that was set aside to go into community was determined based on kind of like what the county needed for our own pandemic-related needs. So if we could maybe get at some point in the near future, an updated accounting of what we've used and what we haven't used, maybe there are some opportunities there. And then I'm looking forward to when we have the conversation about the second tranche and what we can do with that next round of, of funding. There are so many needs in our community and this is a tremendous opportunity to make a dent in some of those, so thank you. And I know, I'll just set it aside, I know that there are some questions in the chat about process that we can, maybe the chair or maybe you or Jason can follow up with the person who's asking questions in the chat. Unfortunately, this isn't really a conversational back and forth, for better or for worse, and sometimes for worse, it's not really like a, a back and forth conversation, but we see you out there, we see your questions and we will follow up.
Just help me understand the 1 million for housing. Since we're going to consider affordable housing ordinance now, and that takes 30 days to go into effect, what would that 1 million be used for? Are we talking infrastructure? Are we talking a developer? We have a list of developers, we do an RFP for a housing project. And then, of course, the county would have to choose a developer. 1 million doesn't necessarily go far when you're building large-scale housing projects. So that 1 million, are we talking infrastructure?
I also want to be clear, it's not quite a million because we've already taken out some of our needs, it's going to be below, it's going to be below a million dollars. That's, when we threw out that at the stakeholder meeting, it was a larger. The question was, if we have 1.6, how would we divide it up? So, but part of it is part of the Taos Housing Partnership, where we're going to fund the position of the executive director to work on these opportunities. And, and I'll pass these out later in my own presentation, but it's working with the Taos Housing Partnership is also how we're going to get out that money or it also can be in infrastructure as well. As you recall, we do have some capital outlay that we can use towards infrastructure. We just got to get behind a good project or developer. The commission has already given staff and legal counsel the ability. If we choose and we haven't moved forward on developing the 18 acres, I always mention that to the Taos Housing Partnership that we have, it's 18 acres as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Is that it, commissioners on that topic? Great, thank you very much once again, appreciate you. Okay, bye Nina. Okay, next, I'd like to make a motion to take a five-minute break.
I will second that.
Call for the vote please.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brush?
Yes.
Chair Vahill?
Yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, so there's a motion and second to come from, come back from break. Call for the vote please.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brush?
Yes.
Chair Vahill?
Yes. Okay, so next, we are on item 10, wait, I'm sorry, 11. Public hearings, item A, a public hearing for the discussion, consideration, and action on resolution 2022-62 for the petitioner determination of abandonment or vacation pursuant to New Mexico State Statute 67-2-27 that would vacate only the easement right away, known as Caia de Aguilas, within the properties owned by Stephen, is it Matier?
Matier, yes.
And, and wing Matier, beginning on the northern boundaries of the continuous properties owned by the Matiers at Lot 5, Block F, and Lot 38, Block E, within the Highlands Estates subdivision, and continuing southward to the termination point of Caia Aguilas on the southern boundary of the Matiers property. And we're going to start off with, I'm sorry, I'm going to, go ahead and I believe I need to open the public meeting.
I think?
Oh, okay. Presentation first.
First, I'll give a presentation and introduce the resolution.
Thank you, I don't do this Nina, so yes.
Same here. So if, you know, Ms. Strife, if I get anything wrong, please let me know. I'm relatively green when it comes to public hearings myself.
Well, and I've done a few of these, you think I would have gotten it, but I think my notes are wrong here, so yes, please.
Well, first off, I want to apologize just for the appearance of the packets today because our planning department printer has been giving us some issues, those yellow lines, those blue lines, all of that. It was frustrating to, to put this together and I like to, I like to give the commission a clean, nice legible packet and last week it just wasn't as possible as, as I would have liked. So I apologize for that. But first, but getting to the issue at hand, we're looking at resolution 22-62 and this will be the first of two agenda. And this will be the first of two agenda items today that deals with a request by Mr. Stephen Matier and Ann Wing-Matier regarding their desire to vacate their property and the public easement within that, within their portion of property from the Highland Estates subdivision. And so I think it's probably appropriate now, I'll start by reading the resolution into the record. And then I'll read my staff report into the record and then we can start the public hearing. So this is, Jason, if you want to put this up on the screen, the resolution is numbered page 5 at the top in my packet. All right, so Taos County Resolution Number 2022-62, a resolution declaring the vacation and abandonment of a certain portion of unused and unneeded road right-of-way in the Highland Estates subdivision. Whereas on or about September 3rd, 1963, the Great Midwest Development Company dedicated the streets and easements of the Highland Estates subdivision. Does the mic just cut out?
It just did, yes. Our mics just, they're green, but they're, they're dead.
I think technology is.
Go ahead.
Technology is against me last week. I'm gonna start over with that first whereas statement. So whereas on or about September 3rd, 1963, the Great Midwest Development Company dedicated the streets and easements of the Highland Estates subdivision to Taos County, New Mexico. And whereas Calle de Aguilas is one such street dedicated to the county located within the Highland Estates subdivision. And whereas the property owners of, the property owners of record of Block F, lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and Block E, actually, that should, should read, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to get you an edited version because that should read Block F, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 40, 41, and 42. And so I'll correct that before we get the signed, you know, if approved version. And Block E, lots 38, 39, 40, 41, and 42. Petition the county to vacate the portion of Calle de Aguilas adjacent to their property as the street has not been utilized as a right-of-way and is no longer necessary for access to their properties. And whereas the property owners have received a deed from a special master granting them that portion of Calle de Aguilas that the property owners use as easement. And whereas the property owners filed a petition for determination of abandonment or vacation pursuant to New Mexico State Statute 67-2-7 to vacate only the easement right-of-way of the platted Calle de Aguilas legally described as lying between blocks E and F and south of Forest Road 222 as shown on the Highland Estates subdivision plat recorded with the Taos County Clerk on September 9th, 1963 in Cabinet B, Page 32B, Highland Estates plat with the eastern boundary of the portion of Calle de Aguilas to be vacated along the western boundaries of lots 38 through 42 inclusive Block E, north to south. The southern boundary of Calle de Aguilas lying between the southwest point of Lot 42, Block E, to the southeast point of Lot 1, Block F. The western boundary of the portion of Calle de Aguilas to be vacated along the eastern boundaries of lots 1 through 5 inclusive Block F, north or south to north. And the northern boundary lying between the northeast point of Lot 5, Block F, and the northwest point of Lot 22, Block E, all shown and described on the Highland Estates plat for the Highland Estates subdivision. And whereas the planning department has reviewed such documentation and determined that no other property owners will be adversely affected by the vacation and abandonment of the street or right-of-way known as Calle de Aguilas. And whereas Section 67-2-7 NMSA 1978 authorizes political subdivisions of the state, such as the county, to abandon property or property interests acquired for public road, street, or highway purposes by formal declaration of vacation of abandonment. Now therefore, be it resolved and proclaimed by the governing body of the county of Taos that 1, the portion of Calle de Aguilas identified and described and exhibit, this says 3, I'm gonna change that to 1 and give you the exhibit with it as well, that gives you the legal description. The vacated right-of-way is hereby declared vacated and abandoned. 2, this vacation and abandonment shall not affect the rights, if any, of utilities, if any, located within the vacated right-of-way. And so with that read into the record, now I'll read into the record my staff report regarding this. Staff report for resolution 22-62, petition for determination of abandonment or vacation pursuant to New Mexico State Statute 67-2-7 to vacate only the easement right-of-way of the platted Calle de Aguilas legally described as lying between blocks E and F, south of Forest Road 222, as shown on the Highland Estates subdivision plat recorded with the Taos County Clerk on September 9th, 1963 in Cabinet B, 32B, Highland Estates plat with the eastern boundary of the portion of Calle de Aguilas to be vacated along the western boundaries of lots 38 through 42 inclusive Block E, north to south. The southern boundary of Calle de Aguilas lying between the southwest point of Lot 42, Block E, to the southeast point of Lot 1, Block F. The western boundary of the portion of Calle de Aguilas to be vacated along the eastern boundaries of lots 1 through 5 inclusive Block F, south to north. And the northern boundary lying between the northeast point of Lot 5, Block F, and the northwest point of Lot 22, Block E, all shown and described on the Highland Estates plat for the Highland Estates subdivision. It is my determination that today's public hearing for the above-stated purpose has met the notification requirements by means of certified return receipt mail. And as per the records of the Taos County Assessors Office, notification was provided to owners of record of property contiguous to the subdivided land. The appearance of a legal advertisement advising of today's public hearing, which legal advertisement appeared in the September 29th, 2022 and October 6th, 2022 additions of the Taos News and by posting the property advising of today's public hearing. I deem it appropriate to proceed with the public hearing where the Board of County Commissioners expected action is to approve, deny, prove, to approve or deny resolution 2022-62, petition for determination of abandonment or vacation pursuant to State Statute 67-2-7. Stephen Matier and Ann Wing-Matier are the owners of the aforementioned lots within Highland Estates that abut the portions of the Calle de Aguilas easement that are being proposed to be vacated. Through their attorney, Abby Singer, doing business at Taos Attorney LLC Law Firm, they are petitioning for determination of abandonment or vacation pursuant to State Statute 67-2-7, which states, "Any owner of lands abutting any highway, street, or road his heirs or assigned may petition the state or any commission, department, bureau, agency, or political subdivision thereof who believes a section of any public road, street, or highway is no longer needed for the public purposes and may petition the state or any commission, department, bureau, agency, or political subdivision thereof for a formal determination of abandonment or vacation." So this is a process that began in 2017 and due to the somewhat unusual nature of the processes involved, it has taken this long to bring this before the Board of Commissioners. The Matiers purchased the 13 acre, the 13 quarter-acre lots for 3 and 1/4 total acres in 2015, along with an existing cabin that was built by the property's original owners, the Mora Estate. That cabin was built prior to current land use regulations and was placed in the Calle de Aguilas right-of-way. I will let the applicant's agent speak more about the Matiers' reasoning for seeking this determination during the public hearing, but will state here in my staff report that this action is essentially necessary due to the fact that in improving the Highland Estates subdivision plat in 1963, the county commissioners at that time, on, the county commissioners at that time, on behalf of the public accepted the dedication of the streets and easements within the subdivision. This acceptance did not obligate the county to maintain said streets or easements, which are, as I believe, not on the county's inventory of maintained roads. However, that acceptance established these easements as belonging to the county on behalf of the public. It is my determination that the applicant's request meets the requirements of statute, of Section 67-2-7 and that the section of public road at issue falls solely within the boundaries of the applicant's contiguous properties, which they are in the process of consolidating and removing from Highland Estates subdivision through partial plat vacation. Further, Calle de Aguilas dead ends into the Matiers' property and is not used to access any properties owned by any landowners south of the Highland Estates subdivision. To that end, I can say that this request meets the requirements of 67-2-7 and that the affected section of Calle de Aguilas is no longer needed for public purposes. It is the decision now of the Board of County Commissioners to vote to approve or deny this petition for determination of abandonment or vacation through resolution 2022-62. And so Ms. Strife has been involved in this process since, since I've, before I was involved, she was working with Edward to help arrive at this particular pathway for the Matiers to reach their goals for their property. And so she's here and she can answer questions during the public hearing. Additionally, the applicant's agent, Ms. Abby Singer, is also here and can answer questions as well. And with that, I believe we can start the public hearing.
Great, thank you. Okay, next, who do we have, Matiers or Miss Singer? Are you going to speak?
I think you have to, there's an official opening of the public hearing.
Okay.
Where you need to state the time.
Okay, notes are not right here. Okay, so let's open, let's open the public meeting and so this meeting is now open and it is 9:11 for the record. 9:11, did I say that? 9:14 for the record. Oh, I'm sorry, 11:14. I guess we all stopped earlier the clock. 11:14, my apologies. Okay, and now I guess, Corey, please guide me here. Next, we have the Matiers or representation?
We're just open for a public comment.
And I believe, I believe, Abby, you can correct me if this is wrong, but I believe you're here, you can answer questions if need be, but you don't have an actual statement.
I'm here to answer questions as needed.
Okay, so there's not a presentation in addition to what you have presented? Okay, so, okay, so we're opening the, it's been open, so any public comments? Well, yeah, we're gonna learn here, okay?
Same, same here.
Okay.
And so that is a question, Corey, do we need to differentiate any comment? Okay, so we're open to any comment now.
Okay, and then, of course, then we'll open it to the commissioners for questions as well. Okay, so any public comments? Anyone present that would like to speak, please come on up? Okay, seeing none, anyone online? I can't see. Okay, I can't see, but you're gonna go ahead and tell us, Jason? Anyone online that would like to speak? Please raise your hand or mute yourself. I see a few people that are not mute, but not sure if they're wanting to speak. Ms. Gonzalez or Ms. James, are you wanting to speak? I don't think so, okay. So there's no one wanting to speak for or against. Commissioners, any questions? Yes.
Thank you. You have your father's smile. Just a couple quick questions in reference to Forest Road 222. This action will not block access to that Forest Road?
Calle de Aguilas comes off of 522 and I should really not call it Calle de Aguilas. It is grass with a couple tire tracks that I made when I went to go put the signs out. It is not really a road road, it is where a road should or could be, that's where the platted road is. But the 522 is not affected at all. We need it to access Aguilas.
Okay, and then, just curious, Nova Scotia notarized, they would travel.
So the Matiays travel quite a bit.
Okay.
That is where they were when I needed this document and so that's where the notary came from.
So, and then?
They say Matiay.
Okay.
So I'm going with Matiay.
Okay.
And then, Mr. Jones? We have two public hearings on this. In other words, we're, they're combining lots into one. Does that happen in this public hearing or the next one?
So that would be, well, the consolidation would actually happen after all of this is approved. And so just to kind of give a high-level view of everything that needs to happen. First, in order to vacate their properties from the subdivision, they need the easement portion vacated and they're gonna combine that later. They will still have, at that point, they'll have that portion of easement within their 13 contiguous lots and their 13 contiguous quarter-acre lots that they will be, you know, in the next agenda item petitioning to have that vacated as a partial plat vacation from Highland Estates. If that, if both of these items are approved today, they have a survey all ready to go where they're going, proposing to do a lot line adjustment and consolidate those 13 lots inclusive of their portion of that right-of-way into one property.
Okay, that comes at a later time. Okay, thank you.
It's, 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 there's a lot to this. It's why it's taken several years. Yeah.
Okay, I have a question. I was looking at the resolution and it refers to, let me get to it, so I think it says Midwest as the, the prior owners, or let's see, it says the Great Midwest Development Company. I believe that's Great Southwestern.
Southwest, is that, I believe.
Yes, that is an error, yes.
We'll have to, we'll double-check that.
On page 14, it refers to as Great Southwestern, I'm sorry, Great Western Development.
Okay. We'll double-check that and before we get you the documents to sign.
I remember as an assessor, that was a really common. That's my only question.
Thank you for catching that.
And I think I now understand that this will not affect anyone's ability to get in and out. And of course, I saw the notification to Mr. Otero and many others that would or could potentially be affected.
Yeah, and to clarify, you know, in regard, you know, they come in off of 289 on Forest Road 222 and then drive south on the easement for Calle de Aguilas. And there's a portion of that that will remain public easement south of 222 and it will not, there will not be any vacating until you get to the northern boundary of the Matiays' property.
Okay.
And then they're, they are on the southern border backed up to, I believe, it's either Forest Service land or BLM, I don't know, I don't recall, on the southern boundary. And so there are no other property owners to the south of them who will be affected by this, by losing this potential access.
Great. Okay. Okay, commissioners, any other questions, comments? Okay, and following my notes, then if there are no questions, we can close the public meeting. And it is 11:20 for the record. Okay, and commissioners, what are your wishes? Want to entertain a motion?
Madam Chair, I would move to approve resolution 2022-62 for the petitioner determination of abandonment or vacation pursuant to New Mexico State Statute Section 67-2-27 that would vacate only the easement right-of-way known as Calle de Aguilas within the properties owned by Stephen Matier and Ann Wing-Matier with the corrections as necessary to the first whereas, the appropriate name, Great Midwest versus the actual name, and the correction that Mr. Jones pointed out in the third whereas with reference to Blocks E versus Blocks F. So with those corrections, I would move to approve.
Madam Chair, I will second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve as stated by Vice Chair. Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve as stated by Vice Chair. Call for the vote, please.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brash?
Yes.
Chair of the Hill?
Yes.
Okay, so moving on to the next public hearing, a public hearing for the discussion, consideration, and action regarding a request for partial plat vacation pursuant to section nine dot three dot two of the Taos County Subdivision Ordinance, two thousand and five dash eight of lots one, two, three, four, five, forty, forty-one, forty-two of block F and lots thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two of block E contiguous and owned by Stephen Matier and Ann Wing Matier within the Highland Estates subdivision. And Andy, chairs again?
And I'll try to not repeat too much of the backstory here within my staff report, but this is that second part where now we're, now we're dealing with the subdivision regulations, ordinance two thousand and five dash eight, section nine point three, where an individual can request a vacation from a subdivision or a partial plat vacation. And so with that, I'll read into the record my staff report, staff report for petition for partial plat vacation. Abby Sanger, Esquire, doing business as Taos Attorney LLC, representing Stephen Matier and Ann Wing Matier, owner of lots one, two, three, four, five, forty and forty-one of block F and lots thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one and forty-two of block E of Highland Estates subdivision. Request the partial vacation of the final plat for the Highland Estates subdivision, in particular, the aforementioned lots as set forth in the subdivision plat of the Highland Estates subdivision filed for record on September ninth, nineteen sixty-three, in Cabinet B, page thirty-two B, records of the Taos County, records of Taos County, New Mexico, and more specifically described in the special master's deed filed for record on January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, in book one thousand and seventy-four, page three-seventy-four, records of Taos County, New Mexico. The proposed vacated parcels are further described as lying within section thirty-four, township twenty-eight north, range nine east, and is further described as being in the vicinity of Trace Piedras, Taos County, New Mexico. It is my determination that today's public hearing for the above stated purposes met the notification requirements by means of certified return receipt mail, and as per the records of the Taos County Assessor's Office, notification was provided to owners of record of property contiguous to the subdivided land. The appearance of a legal advertisement advising of today's public hearing, which legal advertisement appeared in the September twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two and October sixth, two thousand and twenty-two additions of the Taos News, and by posting the property advising of today's public hearing. I deem it appropriate to proceed with the public hearing where the Board of County Commissioners' expected action is to approve or deny their respective request for partial plat vacation. Stephen Matier and Ann Wing Matier are the owners of the aforementioned lots within Highland Estates that abut the portions of Calle de Aguilah easement that are being, that were just vacated. Through their attorney, Abby Sanger, doing business as Taos Attorney LLC law firm, they are requesting a partial plat vacation to effectively rescind or cancel a portion of the recorded subdivision, in this case, the Highland Estates subdivision. The action is allowed for by both State Statute forty-seven dash six dash seven and through Taos County Ordinance two thousand and five dash eight, section nine point three. So as I was saying earlier, this has been a long process, and as you may have already noted, the right-of-way vacation was the complicated portion of these two actions. Had it been just this simple partial plat vacation, it would have been presented to the Board of Commissioners probably a few years ago. So, and, you know, in, within the staff packet that I provided to the Board of Commissioners, there was many email threads sort of documenting the process and the decision-making that went into all of this. But ultimately, in accordance with State Statute forty-seven dash six dash seven and section nine point three of ordinance two thousand and five dash eight, Taos County subdivision regulations, any final plat filed in the office of the county clerk may be vacated, or a portion of the final plat may be vacated if, one, the owners of land proposed to be vacated sign an acknowledged statement declaring the final plat or a portion of the final plat to be vacated, which the applicants have done through their request for plat vacation found under exhibit three. And, two, the statement is approved by the Board of County Commissioners of the county within whose plating authority the vacated portion of the subdivision is located. In approving the vacation of all or part of a final plat, the Board of County Commissioners shall determine whether or not the plat vacation will adversely affect the interests of persons on contiguous land or persons within the subdivision being partially vacated. As per section nine point three point five, filing of ordinance two thousand and five dash eight, Taos County subdivision regulations, the filing requirements for approving the vacation of all or part of a final plat requires that the approved statement declaring the vacation of a portion or all of a final plat shall be filed in the office of the county clerk. The county clerk shall mark the final plat with the words "vacated" or "partially vacated" and refer on the final plat to the volume and page on which the statement of vacation is recorded. The language found in sections nine point three point five of ordinance two thousand and five dash eight, Taos County subdivision regulations incorporates the language from the State Subdivision Act, chapter, chapter forty-seven, article six, county subdivisions, vacation of plats, approval duties of county clerk. I find no evidence that the partial plat vacation of lots one, two, three, four, five, forty, forty-one and forty-two of block F and lots thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one and forty-two of block E within the Highland Estates subdivision will adversely affect the interests of persons on contiguous land or of persons within the subdivision being vacated, given that the Matier's properties are on the bottom edge of the subdivision and will not cause issues in regards to access for other property owners or have any other adverse effect. Below are recommended findings of fact to consider by the Board of County Commissioners should a determination be made to approve the partial plat vacation of lots one, two, three, four, five, forty, forty-one and forty-two of block F and lots thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one and forty-two of block E within Highland Estates subdivision. Number one, the owner of land proposed to be vacated signed an acknowledged statement declaring the desire that the final plat or a portion of the final plat be vacated. Two, the applicant provided notice in accordance with section nine point three of ordinance two thousand and five dash eight, Taos County subdivision regulations. Three, the plat vacation will not adversely affect the interests of persons on contiguous land or of persons within the subdivision being vacated. And four, the rights of any utility existing before the total or partial vacation of any final plat are not affected by the partial vacation of the final plat. As previously stated, I believe that the applicant has satisfied the requirements identified in section nine point three, vacation of plats of ordinance two thousand and five dash eight, Taos County subdivision regulations as amended. Should the Board of County Commissioners vote to approve the proposed plat vacation of the aforementioned lots within the Highland Estates subdivision, I will recommend that the following conditions be appended. The applicant shall work with Taos County Senior Planner and County Clerk, where the county clerk shall mark the decision of the Board of Commissioners regarding the Highland Estates survey plat with the words "vacated," or in this instance, I believe it would need to say "partially vacated," and refer on the decision of the Board of Commissioners to the volume and page on which the statement of vacation is recorded. The subject property shall be subject to present, to present subdivision and land use provisions and other applicable ordinances and regulations. And, and should you approve this partial plat vacation, I have prepared a, a statement of partial plat vacation that we would use, work with the clerk and have that document referenced and recorded and referenced on the final plat. And I believe we would also reference the just approved resolution on the final plat as well to note the vacation of the easement. And with that, the same folks are here and we can start the public hearing.
Okay, let's open up the public meeting, and it is eleven-thirty for the record, and is there anyone who would like to speak in regards to for or against what has been spoken about? In the chambers, seeing none, anyone online? Okay, no one? Commissioners, any, any questions?
Just in a letter, it was referenced, some of these lots are in Rio Reba County?
No, but some of the, some of the subdivision is in Rio Reba County.
But not the lots.
Right, and so the, the, the original plat does reference approvals from both counties of the original subdivision, but these particular lots are all within Taos County.
Okay, thank you.
And a question for you in regards to if this is approved, what is the next step in, in regards to it being recognized in the Assessor's Office as one piece?
If, if approved, then I have this, this record of decision prepared that would have you sign today, and from there, you know, the thirty-day appeal window would, would be open for anyone who wants to, to have an appeal. You know, anyone who qualifies for the appeal, which I believe in this matter would be adjacent parcel owners. And so, once that thirty-day window has expired and assuming that there are no appeals at that point, then I would take this record of decision to, well, actually, it'll be recorded as soon as it's, as it's approved, or today or tomorrow. But thirty days after it's been recorded, then I will get together with Ms. Montoya, and we will get out that original Highland Estates survey plat and on there, put the words "partially vacated" and reference this record of decision and its book and page location within the clerk's office.
Does it require a deed from themselves to themselves, but with the new description?
I believe that would be part of the consolidation efforts, that they'll be, yeah, going through it.
That's what I thought, thank you. Okay, I have no other questions? Okay, so seeing that there are no other questions, let's close the public meeting. It is eleven-thirty-five, thirty-four? Okay, so Commissioners, what is your, what are your wishes? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, if I may, and the document that the lots are correct in this one? There's no changes?
No, not, none.
None in these?
None in these.
Okay. Madam Chair, I make a motion to, for partial plat vacation pursuant to section nine point three point two of the Taos County subdivision ordinance, two thousand and five dash eight of lots one, two, three, four, five, forty, forty-one, forty-two of block F and lots thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two of block E contiguous and owned by Stephen Matier and Ann Wing Matier within the Highland Estates subdivision.
And I will second.
She said that beautifully, huh?
Well done.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brash?
Yes.
Chair of the Hill?
Yes.
There we go.
All right, thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for your hard work. Okay, so moving on. And whoever's gonna be the next chair, let's make sure we get those notes right. Okay, so let's see here, we are now at, and let me just get my bearings here, moving on to resolutions and ordinances, and we're on twelve A, discussion, consider, consideration and, consider and take action on proposed ordinance twenty-two dash four, an ordinance establishing an affordable housing program pursuant to the Taos County Affordable Housing Plan, defining terms, establishing application requirements, and review criteria, and establishing procedures to administer an affordable housing program. Andy, you are up again.
All right, so full, full dose of me today. All right, so I'm pleased to introduce proposed ordinance twenty-two dash four, the Taos County Affordable Housing Ordinance. The ordinance has been approved by the New Mexico Mortgage Finance Authority and went before the Taos County Board of Commissioners in a work-study session on May twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, and again for discussion on September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Further, the Taos County Planning Commission held a special meeting on Thursday, October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, where the Planning Commission heard, reviewed, and discussed proposed ordinance twenty-two dash four, and the Planning Commission offered a recommendation of approval to the Taos County Board of Commissioners. Notice of public hearing before the Board of County Commissioners has been given in the Taos News where a legal advertisement appeared in the September twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two and October sixth, two thousand and twenty-two additions of the Taos News advising of the date of October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two as the date of the public hearing. Notice was also included, the notice also included the subject of the regulation, the time and place of the hearing, the manner in which interested persons may present their views, and the place and manner in which interested persons may secure copies of any proposed regulation, which included the office of the county clerk and/or county planning department beginning on September twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. Additionally, it was placed under proposed ordinances on the Taos County website under the planning department's ordinances and regulations landing page. Madam Chair, Commissioners, it is my determination that the public hearing may, today has met the statutory requirements and may proceed. As you know, the Taos County Affordable Housing Ordinance will codify the county's ability to claim an exemption to the state anti-donation clause, which is provided specifically when it comes to affordable housing. It will also allow local developers and individuals to leverage mortgage finance authority funding and programs in order to provide affordable housing within Taos County. Additionally, it will allow these developers and allow the county to work with developers and using some of our own funding. The ordinance will create an affordable housing program, the likes of which has not yet been fully developed. However, this ordinance allows Taos County to offer financial assistance through grants, waived fees, infrastructures, and associated fees, and other means necessary in order to encourage developers and individuals to build and develop more affordable housing. Such assistance will come in exchange for an appropriate affordability period in which the developer, homeowner, landowner, et cetera, will agree to offer their property at or below a fair market rate, generally considered affordable to residents within the eighty percent to one hundred and twenty percent range of area median income for a number of years from ten to twenty, depending on the amount of assistance. The ordinance incorporates feedback heard from the Board of Commissioners during the May twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two workshop meeting, including language regarding the housing choice voucher program, language regarding the New Mexico Uniform Owner Resident Relations Act, and increased affordability periods. In general, this ordinance is a relatively straightforward document based on the New Mexico Affordable Housing Act and drafted from the Doña Anna County Ordinance provided by the New Mexico Mortgage Finance Authority. In addition to the latest draft of the ordinance, I attached the letter from the New Mexico Mortgage Finance Authority approving this ordinance, along with a sample application form provided by MFA, which qualified grantees would use to become certified to apply for MFA funds that will be available for affordable housing projects if ordinance twenty-two dash four is passed by the Taos County Board of Commissioners. We may proceed to the public hearing.
I'm a little confused because you just said to proceed to, we've already gone through the, the public hearing, correct?
Well, this, this requires a public hearing.
It still requires, okay, it wasn't placed under the public hearing, but it, okay.
Whenever I went, came before you in September, asked for the time, date, and place, that was to open this up and take any public comment again.
So we have to go through?
Yes.
Okay, and my apologies, I really meant to check with someone prior to, because I did see that, but it didn't seem to fall under public hearing. Okay, so with that being said, we do need to open this up for a public hearing, so for the record, it is now eleven?
Actually, Madam Chair, since it's not, and this is perhaps a question for Cory and Branch, since it's not listed as a public hearing on the agenda? I'm just saying.
Oh, yeah, okay, that's, that was my question, yeah.
I mean, as Mr. Jones said, it was noticed properly everywhere, but it's not listed on?
That's what threw me off, yes, it's not on our list.
So I just want to know what, what we're actually able to do.
Okay, thank you.
I'll answer this. Okay, so the ordinance hasn't changed meaningfully since the last public hearing, so we're not obligated to open it to public hearing. You have the discretion to do so, understanding, of course, that if we do, we're gonna re-trigger the window and have to do another thirty-day notice and rinse and repeat. I feel personally that because it hasn't had any meaningful changes?
Yes.
And MFA has already approved, that we don't have any purpose doing so.
I, okay, with that being said, Commissioners, I, I would say let's forego another public hearing. It seems like we beat this one and, and so there's no major changes? So with that being said, no public hearing, is there any questions? I just, I just have a comment.
I just have a comment, I just want to say thank you, Andy, for working so long and hard on this. You know, it is not, it doesn't give us an affordable housing plan and solution in the community, but it's a very important tool that as we partner with the community in these efforts, we have this tool available to us. So I'm really grateful that you bring your background and expertise in this area of work, so thank you very much for giving us this tool.
Thank you for that.
Commissioner O'Donnell? You have any?
Just that you did have to get approval from, was it DFA?
MFA.
MFA, Mortgage Finance Authority, so they've checked this, and it's all good to go. Thank you.
Yes, and I would just like to echo what Vice Chair said, thank you very much, I know you put a lot of work into it, and I believe Cory, you have as well, so thank you. I know we don't often thank our attorneys, but we are very grateful we have you, and as the Vice Chair stated very well, this is another tool, I now understand fully how this is important, so thank you for the hard work. And with that being said.
Madam Chair, may I move to approve ordinance 2022-4, an ordinance establishing an affordable housing program pursuant to the Taos County Affordable Housing Plan, defining terms, establishing application requirements and review criteria, and establishing procedures to administer an affordable housing program.
Madam Chair, I will second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, and Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Vice Chair Brash.
Yes.
Chair Phil.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, next, 12B, the Andy Show is over. Okay, 12B, Discussion, A Consideration and Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution Number 2022-63, A Resolution for the Adoption of the Annual Community Development Block Grant Policies and Certifications, and I believe Ms. Laurie Montoya, Grants Administrator, is with us online, thank you Laurie, it's all yours? Okay, can't hear Laurie. Laurie, we can't hear you? Okay.
How about now? Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners, this is a required annual resolution that's required by the Department of Finance Administration, along with the Community Dependent Block Grant Bureau, and we adopt this every year in the intent to apply for more CDBG grants, it's an annual requirement, and I ask for approval.
Commissioners, any questions regarding this topic? No, seeing none, is there, what are the wishes of the commission, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I wish to move we approve Resolution Number 2022-63, A Resolution for the Adoption of the Annual Community Development Block Grant Policies and Certifications, with thanks to Ms. Laurie Montoya.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I will second.
Okay, there's a motion in a second, Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Vice Chair Brash.
Yes.
Chair Phil.
Yes.
Okay, moving on, 12B.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you Laurie. Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution Number 2022-64, Resolution Repelling and Replacing Resolution Number 1995-8, A Resolution for the Purpose of Restructuring the Taos County Agricultural Facilities Board, Clarifying Board Positions, Reforming the Agricultural Center Manager Position, and clarifying the responsibilities for timely reporting to the Taos County Board of Commissioners. And before this is Cory Strife, am I gonna, I'm bad at names here.
It is Strife, thank you.
I just want to say Cory, Cory, our legal counsel, thank you Laurie, I'm Cory for being here.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, so I'm before you, I regret at the end of a long and arduous process to revise this resolution, which created the Agricultural Center Facility Board and governed the management of the facility. Largely, what's before you today is two separate resolutions, the distinction between them, they are identical, except for in the membership, and so there is what I am calling sort of the general members, and then the identified members, those two separate resolutions, again, identical in every way, except for those two things. The membership on the general members is that what you have is the one member from each commission district, and two at-large members from the community, factoring in, of course, the expertise and experience related to the agricultural field, and it then goes into the explanation of what those pursuits include, such as commercial and subsistence ranching, animal husbandry, and then the membership in any of the various agricultural organizations, such as the Soil and Water Conservation District, the Farm and Livestock Bureau, Fair Board, 4H, so on and so forth, and so it's a very broad stroke, allowing for the membership to be selected by the county commission for the ag board. And then the other version of the draft changes that a little bit, so what it allows for is three of those members to be selected specifically from those core organizations, so naming the Soil and Water Conservation District, the Taos County Fair Board, and the Farm and Livestock Bureau, and then four at-large members from the county, again, giving some discretion to the amount of experience that exists with the agricultural background and experience. One other thing that I wanted to mention, and this sort of goes back to that public comment earlier, that pertains to the, in Section B, under Paragraph 3, the Board of County Commissioners assigning a county employee or to enter into a contract with a private manager, I acknowledge the way that that reads and implies that we would require a private entity, I motion instead that we would change the phrasing from private manager to an outside manager, to clarify that something like from NMSU, or a nonprofit, a public entity, another governmental entity, if they wanted to do the management, assuming that the county did not, that that would be wholly possible. For example, the current manager is not a county employee, and so therefore allowing to contract with the current manager of the ag board, and so that opens up that opportunity. I would propose we make that change in either draft, because currently it's the same in both versions.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Okay, are we ready for questions?
Any questions?
Okay, commissioners, any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair, could you cite again where that's referenced?
Sure, absolutely, so in both resolutions, it's under Section B, Paragraph 3.
And that would read outside entities?
Outside manager rather than private manager, because private, it does give the impression that we are not talking about public entities, but a public entity is wholly acceptable, and that was one other thing, just sort of to backtrack a little bit, in the identified members, so the one that specifically calls out soil and water conservation, et cetera, that Paragraph 3 does mention that the ag center manager may be the NMSU Agricultural Exemption Services Agent, if that is appropriate or in the best interests of the county, the general membership does not make that call out, but I think that it would be appropriate in either case to amend that, to mention NMSU's ag center would be an appropriate manager as well, so.
And just to clarify, that in the original resolution of 1995, the commission appointed the board members?
Correct.
And this is the same in this new resolution, just to be clear?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Correct, yeah, and to expand on that just a little bit, the only thing that's changing is potentially the breadth of the membership, the general membership allows for the commission to appoint one member from each district, whereas the sort of the more identified membership version specifies three people who must come from one of each of those historically managed places, of soil and water, and so on and so forth. So the general membership allows the commission a little bit more discretion in who they elect, whereas the identified membership version calls out specific places, but it is still at the discretion of the commission to appoint, absolutely.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I have a few questions, so maybe I just didn't see it, or you can maybe direct me in the wording, is there, in regards to the building, the center being used for other uses?
Yes.
Of course, ag is primary, but in the past, it has been used for other events, and, you know, I think it's important that it continues, so is there?
Correct, yes, and actually, that's one of the main purposes of the repeal and replace of this resolution, is to clarify that there are in fact two separate parcels, one parcel which is where the arena is, is that three-acre parcel, which is, it is actually under a restriction in the deed, so it must be utilized only for agricultural purposes, so that arena portion of the facility may only be utilized for certain specific circumstances, however, the remaining two-acre portion of the facility is open to all kinds of community events, and so that's actually also in Paragraph B, or I'm sorry, Section B, that specifies that number two of Paragraph B, that the operation of the agricultural center is a function of the county, and must comply with all the requirements, regulations, yada, 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 but specifically stating that the arena is what shall only be used for the agriculture-related purposes, and that the agricultural center shall not be used for purposes not approved by the county, so what that does is in effect specifies that that three-acre portion, which is called the arena in this resolution, must be for ag, the remainder may be used for anything approved by the county, so any potential use is fair game.
And the boards would certainly give us feedback as to what they would like to see as well, is that?
Correct, yes, it is the purpose of the ag board to continue to maintain and, you know, see those applications through, see those purposes, those, you know, if it were a party, if it were a funeral, if it were a wedding, whatever it may be that would be appropriate in that two-acre partial parcel.
Okay, Madam Chair, may I ask a follow-up related to that point? With that said, like the arena and that parcel being specified as ag only, there are classrooms in that building, and I'm wondering if like a health-related class or other kind of educational efforts would be prohibited based on the language in here now?
So the language in the resolution is not what governs what is and isn't allowed, it's the language on the deed specifically, so it would be whatever it is that the deed requires be done for that specific acreage.
Right, okay. Okay, and I'm just looking at my notes here. Okay, if you'll just bear with me, because I have been reading this and looking at it, and I want to make sure that I ask any questions, so. Okay, I think if there are no questions, commissioners?
Well, just a clarification on the arena, that includes the classrooms in what will eventually be a commercial kitchen, I mean, that, when you say arena, you mean the buildings that are still being built out, the rooms and the commercial kitchen?
Right.
Yeah, just so we're clear, that's what we're referencing, not just the arena.
Well, once again, it's deed-driven, so it's whatever the deed.
Sure, it's whatever specifically, because my understanding is that it is two separate deeds, a two-acre parcel and a three-acre parcel, the three-acre parcel contains the arena, I don't know to what degree there's overlap between the classrooms and the arena, and that deed restriction, so that's going to be, and that's sort of the purpose of the ag board in the first place, is to be able to make that determination whether or not that purpose, if it were a classroom that happens to fall within that three-acre parcel, if it meets what would be considered to be an agricultural purpose with that expertise given to that area, for example, a health-related class may or may not fall into an agricultural purpose, sort of depending on those criteria, and based on the expertise that we will rely on with the ag board.
Right. Okay, any other questions?
I think if we're striking outs, or we're including outside.
Correct, yes, replacing private with outside.
Yeah, that is in Paragraph 3, where it says, replacing private to outside.
Yes.
And that's the only place it's referenced?
Yes.
And so I guess the question I have is, when the commission appoints, are we going to solicit letters of interest, or are we just going to talk individually to those we think should serve on the board? Normally, there's a procedure, like at planning and zoning, they submit letters of interest, so it's not, it's just kind of vague in here as to how that gets done, I mean, is there a recommendation from you or from staff about soliciting letters of interest, or how do we choose?
Sure, that's a fair question, and to be perfectly frank, I do not have an answer for you, my understanding of the general legislation from 1995 and the legislation now, is that the intent is simply to establish that a board exists, and the process for which you can appoint members, the way that you choose to select candidates is entirely at the discretion of the commission, so a recommendation from staff may be the best way to go, but I do not have a good answer for that.
And that's what we typically do, is we open it up, letters of interest are received, and we go from there. Any other questions?
Okay, seeing none, do you have any other questions? Then I'll go ahead and move forward.
So Madam Chair and Ms. Strife, it's really our choice is which version of this resolution we want to put forward, right, either identifying that some members have to come from specific organizations or not, right?
Right.
Just to clarify.
And so I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion for Option 2, and I'd like to go ahead and, yes, I'm going to go ahead, to Option 2, and I have to pull it up, but nonetheless, it is with the naming the three historical organizations that have been there from the very get-go. I also would like to ask for an amendment in regards to those individuals, that those organizations appoint within the organizations, as they know who sits on those boards, and of course, they'll be rotating out, so they get to make that decision amongst themselves and present the names. I just want to say that, you know, Taos prides ourselves in our traditions and culture, and as part of keeping up with traditions and culture, I think it's really important to respect those that came before us, those that actually, from the inception, have been part of, and for us to do anything different, in my mind, disregards all the efforts that have been put into this, I think this is a good balance, we've been struggling with this for quite some time, we know that agricultural evolves all the time, and so we're leaving room for that, but we're also making sure that we don't lose the traditions and cultures, and the stability that has always been there, so with that, I make that motion.
Madam Chair, I.
No, there is unfortunately.
You forgot Paragraph B, 3 outs to strike, private to outside, and your, if you want to get a second, we can discuss this.
And I will amend that to include the correction, as you've stated Cory very well, to remove the word private and list, I believe you said outside?
Yes, outside rather than private.
Outside rather than private.
So I will second the motion to approve with that correction, and specifying the version of the resolution with identified board members with discussion.
Thank you, I, what I object to in your motion is that the nomination of members then no longer becomes a commission decision, but becomes a decision among the three boards, and that deviates from the original resolution and from the one we have at hand, so I don't think that's a good idea, since we always nominate, appoint, commission members, appoint, and for us to change it, you're going to have to tell me where you're changing it in this document, that the, that these groups get to pick their own rather than us picking, I think that can be accomplished through letters of interest, and then they, the board, the different groups recommend a position, I do not, I object to the, your suggestion about the various three boards picking their own appointments, when I believe that's ours, there are a few word grammatical changes I can speak with Cory about afterwards, language, misspelled words.
And Madam Chair, if I may, Commissioner O'Donnell, Corey, maybe you can, you alluded to this a bit previously. I'm not sure the resolution is setting out the process for this. It's setting out where the members are coming from and who is appointing them. It's not necessarily putting in the steps like it has to be advertised here and it's, you know, we're going to solicit this and we're going to open it up. I don't know that that's what a resolution is intended to do. So the part, I agree that the part of the motion where we start to specify within the motion how that process is going to look, I'm not even sure the resolution is actually doing that. It's just kind of assigning authority. Is that accurate? And if so, then how do we kind of back out of the motion that was made?
Sure, Madam Chair and Commissioner Brash. So a couple of points of clarification. So to be perfectly frank, in 1995, the original draft does specify actually that the five members of the Taos County Agricultural Facility Board will be appointed by the commission. One member nominated from each of the following organizations, and then it goes on to name, of course, the Fair Board, Soil and Water Conservation, and Farm and Livestock. So I don't think it's out of line necessarily to accept nominees. However, what I would caution is specifying a number, because it may be that Soil and Water has two or three valid candidates that they would like to submit, all three of them, at which point it is the discretion of the commission to approve. And so I, again, I suggest we have some caution in setting numbers or setting specifics in the resolution to allow for some evolution moving forward. Understanding, of course, that it's entirely acceptable if those commissions or those districts would like to appoint or recommend specific candidates. That's not outside of the bounds of what this resolution allows.
Okay. So any other discussion, further discussion, and I will amend my motion?
So what we would do, Madam Chair, is call for a vote and simply vote no, and then we can make any motion.
Okay.
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 That's easy.
Then call for the vote?
Commissioner O'Donnell?
No.
Vice Chair Brash?
No.
Chair of the Hill?
No.
Thank you, Corey, for your direction. Okay, then now I'd like to make a motion. Okay, to approve option number two. And also to change the wording, remove private and replace it with outside.
Sure, in section, sorry, Madam Chair, in section, in section B, paragraph three.
Section B?
Section B, paragraph three.
Section B, paragraph three.
I will second that motion, Madam Chair.
Okay. Call for the vote?
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brash?
Yes.
Chair of the Hill?
Yes.
Thank you, finally. Okay, so let's move forward. Let's move on to consent agenda. And let's see, I was told we don't have to read each and every item, but, pardon me? Oh, I thought you were talking to me. Consent agenda, we've got items A, B, C, D, E, F, G as stated in the, in the agenda and was posted online and with details. So commissioners, what are your wishes going forward on the consent agenda? We're on consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through G?
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda, items A through G.
I will second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve consent agenda, A through G. Madam Chair, call for the vote?
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brash?
Yes.
Chair of the Hill?
Yes.
Okay. So now we're on 14 County Managers Report and Matters. A, we've got flat B dash 007, John Dunn Bridge's update. Mr. Romio and Mr. Fernandez, pleasure to have you here with us.
Mr. Fernandez will be presenting on the John Dunn Flat Project. He's already distributed this photos to you also.
Good morning, Chair of the Hill. Good morning, Vice Chair Brash. Good morning, Commissioner O'Donnell. As far as the John Dunn Bridge project and the Rio Hondo Bridge, the Rio Hondo Bridge has been completely disassembled. They are currently doing a group of micro piles that will take care of the abutments and really support everything underneath. That testing, the initial sacrificial pile testing took place on October 12th. Everything went through okay with it. And the remaining 16 holes will actually be completed October 23rd, the projected date. As far as the Rio Hondo Bridge, there is the temporary bridge that is allowing for access to the John Dunn Bridge that is in place, that is being currently used for efforts on the larger of the two bridges, which is a John Dunn. As far as the John Dunn Bridge, their encapsulation, that has already been completed. They did have some leaks to the, to the tarping. They did take care of those with recent storms. They made them very apparent that they did have some holes in there. So they took care of those and everything was all squared away with it. The lead abatement is underway. They are pushing for additional support to be able to get that taken care of quicker in order for them to be able to get the epoxy in there by at least mid-November. Just to be sure that everything is okay as far as the temperatures. The bridge itself is currently, like I said, completely inaccessible by anybody other than the late Abetman crew that is currently working on that particular bridge right now. As far as the delays, we've had about a month added to our original date. And that has been based on a few things that have sort of transpired by the construction crew, delays that they've had on their side. The delays that we've had on, other than that, has been from just people causing havoc down there. We've had a lot of issues prior that has been slowed down quite a bit by law enforcement being very vigilant, being accessible, having personnel down there as well. We did have one issue here last week that a individual was able to make it past the gated area down to the very bottom where these micro piles were taking place. Individual was extremely drunk and caused a lot of issues down there. Law enforcement from BLM as well as through the Sheriff's Department had to respond. The individual was taken into custody and his vehicle was then pulled from the, from the job site. And that did slow down progress for quite a while without all took place. But everything else is going okay. The road is, is being maintained for activity in and out of there by all involved with the project. And we are taking care of that bill to it. So I stand for any questions?
Any questions, commissioners?
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Fernandez, very, very much for the update. Appreciate it. Just a quick little thing, point of clarification, when you said that the team is looking for additional support to keep the lead abatement work going, that just means like looking for more workers?
Yes, they actually have another crew coming in to be able to speed that up a little bit.
Excellent.
Because every time they, they remove the original paint that was in there, they are needing to clean, reapply primer so that we do not get any condensation on bare metal and we start needing to do all that stuff all over again.
Thank you.
And I did provide packets to you, commissioners, as far as, as far as the progress. The first page will indicate the John Dunn Bridge is how it's been completely covered up to allow for any paints, solvents, any debris coming off that bridge to make its way into the river. So that has been completely sealed up. Second photo in there showing the inside of that John Dunn Bridge as it's being worked on right now. And, and you can tell from that photo is everything is completely closed off from the elements outside as far as the river and any of the air or anything that is outside. Third picture will actually show some of the lead abatement that is taking place, what those particular trusses are looking like after years and years of paint have been removed from them. Fourth page will show the clean product that is left after that sandblasting has been taking place. Everything is, is pretty much taken down to bare metal. And subsequently, those, the next page will show similar type of issues. The next page that will come through will actually show a photo which will indicate the, the station crew as it's facing towards the switchbacks there. The individual that I spoke to that was able to make his way to the project actually got as far as that, up to that point. But as far as the, this is prior to the Rio Hondo Bridge. Next picture will actually show the drilling machine that we've got out there and the temporary bridge that was put across the Rio Hondo. And as far as the second to the last photo there will show the actual encasement type of drilling, rods that are actually put into the, into the earth to create those, those micro piles. And the end product on those micro piles is as far as the supports and as far as the casings are what is on that last page. And right now we've got eight, a micro piles per abutment. We've got two total abutments, so 16 total of those.
Quite the production, huh?
Yes, it has been.
Great, the photos are very helpful. Thank you. I've been wanting to drive over there, but can't seem to make it. We should maybe, yeah, yeah, really. Great. Any questions?
Just, Madam Chair, have they extended the deadline? I think they were going to have it done in November. Has that been delayed?
They are pushing right now for December 1st. And that is extremely hopeful. But like I said, there's still a lot of factors that will determine whether that's going to be kept. And keeping individuals out of there is going to be very helpful on trying to maintain that date. Anything further will only delay that as well as get us further into winter, which causes a lot more issues when it comes to deadlines, because now we're dealing with concrete, we're dealing with paint. And those don't work very well with concrete, so, yeah.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Sure.
Commissioners, Chair of the Hill, Commissioner Brash, Commissioner O'Donnell, thank you for allowing Joe to present today. One thing that I just wanted to point out with this is the, these micro piles that are getting drilled in here, we're at a, the specs were at 24 feet to 48. We're closer to about 38 feet, correct?
36 on one, 32 on the other.
Yeah, so there could be some additional costs that are coming towards this project. We've already added some contingency that was a request back in March. But at $850 per micro pile per foot, that's $850. And then the casing that goes in here and the grouting of all these, essentially they're just anchors to the bridge abutments. But, you know, that is a contributing factor that Joe has pointed out, that where we're at, we've kind of to get the, to hit the engineer's identified level for this to be, to maximize the structural strength of this bridge, of the Rio Hondo Bridge, that's one thing that may take into account our increase in our flap contribution. But I just wanted to point out, Joe kind of highlighted all that, but one thing that our community and, I don't know, try to put this nicely, but the individuals that continue to go down there and create havoc is going to cost, incur cost to the county that is going to affect us at the end of the day, because this is going a month behind schedule. There's been material theft. There's been just, Joe didn't bring up, but we had a shooting, they shot at the bridge the other day from the top and just started shooting at it. You know, I mean, that halted production, had to call law enforcement out there. So as long as we can spread the word and let people know in the community, they're only costing our community tax dollars that could, this could have been kind of sewed up if they would just allow us to not go down there and give us the time. It's like I mentioned in the paper. The 90-day project, 120-day projects is going to create 50 to 100 years of longevity for this community. So for them to not understand and the disrespect that's, that's happening is essentially costing us money that could go into our roads. So, so I just wanted to point that out. But Joe did an exceptional job with this presentation, but I just wanted to highlight that. So you guys do talk to constituents and the complaints that they have that this is closed off, they're essentially costing us money for this disruption on a daily basis. So, thank you.
Just wondering if we can do anything other than another article in the paper so people understand exactly how you stated it, which I thought the first article is well-written and pointed out some really important things. But do we, do we have anyone, I mean, it's more money, right? If we have someone set up at the top that's not allowing, you know, to make sure that everyone can do their job and continue forward? Do we have any security of any kind?
Currently, yes, there's security that has been contracted by Mr. Dan Curtis of Monitor Construction. He's the, they're the general of the project. They're, they're hiring off-duty police officers. Our Sheriff's Department has been hired recently and they're kind of going on their off-duty hours and keeping, kind of just, they're staying up there as much as they can during the night. So that has halted the project, I mean, has helped the project. The theft has, has reduced, but yeah, it's just the constant daily occurrence of somebody going down. And as, as Director Fernandez mentioned, a person was arrested this last week, you know, so, you know, I mean, I don't know, I hate to always take that into account, but somebody needs to be made an example and prosecution needs to go against them because essentially costing us taxpayer dollars. So.
Madam Chair, could, could we put a roadblock on top further back?
There is, there is.
There is?
Yeah, there's actually a gate. So the contractor's actually established a gate for no one to go down unless there has been, their, their employees will come up there and open up the gate to allow access into the job site. So, yeah, so there is, there's been a gate, there's multiple signs, there's some road signs that were established on both the north, the northbound and southbound lanes identifying the road is closed. So.
And could the BLM put up additional signs regarding criminal trespass prosecution? I mean, are there any other signs?
As far as any additional signage, I mean, they're very clear on indicating that the bridge is shut, is not, does not have any access to the river's edge at all. That has been at the very top of the hill prior to getting into Hondo, as well as right at the gate. Now, I think at certain times during the day, contractors will leave that gate closed, not locked, to allow for additional people to come in and out, because they are pretty busy down at the very bottom. So I think at that point, people are just driving up, wiggling a lock and finding it unlocked and actually throwing that thing to the side and actually driving down and trying to make a point that they do have accessibility, even though it's clearly stated that they do not.
And it just seems if there was more signage on top about prosecution of trespassing or criminal acts. And what I'm hearing then, there was, there had been no rock slides, so they've been able to come down through the switchbacks with their equipment?
No, ma'am. The accessibility is through the Arroyo Hondo side. The John Dunn's, or as far as the John Dunn Road on the switchbacks, that is still currently closed.
So, but where are they, you said they come down from a different location?
From the Arroyo Hondo side, from the Arroyo Hondo side.
Okay.
Now, as far as through the switchbacks, you do have accessibility to a certain point for the, the hot springs, but that is solely by foot or by mountain bike, probably a motorcycle would probably get down there. But from the hot springs to the bridge, to the John Dunn. But from the hot springs to the bridge, to the John Dunn Bridge or the river's edge, they do have an additional fencing and gate up there to prohibit anybody walking down to the larger of the bridges, which is a John Dunn that is completely covered up.
I, so the gate is not on the top by the switchback, the gate is on the Hondo side?
Okay, so as far as the Hondo side, we have one gate at the very top of the hill prior to dropping down into the canyon. That is the one that is currently locked at all times. For the exception of those times that we do have other contractors going in that literally will just sort of set that on its hook. But it is indicating that everything is closed from there on down, indicating that there is a bridge out down there as well. No trespassing. The additional gate that I'm talking about is on the switchback side, which is on the Montoso side of the ridgeline there. We do have that road closed off at the very top. We do have barricades in place and a road closed, indicating that it's only accessible through walking to access the, the Ojo down there as far as the hot springs. Now, from the hot springs, as you're going down the switchbacks, from the hot springs to the large bridge that is currently being worked on, there is an additional gate at that point to not allow access to that river's edge or any of that recreational area down by the bridge. Just in order to try to keep everybody away from there, to allow that lead abatement to take place and that encapsulation to remain intact so that there is no, there is no harm being caused to that by people walking down there.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, okay.
I just have one last question in regards to, I believe you indicated the need for staff, additional individuals to go in and help. Is that correct, my understanding? I thought you were hiring, they were hiring some additional.
That is between the contractor.
Okay, got it.
The contractor indicated that they were going to be bringing in additional personnel.
Got it. I was just going to ask, how are they going to do that? But that's on then. Okay, then I'll leave that alone. Thank you. Okay, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
Next, we are looking at update to County Commission on various items affecting Tous County. Mr. Hadameo.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Beginning next week, the week of October 24th, our internal auditors will be present. So, Madam Chair and Vice Chair, we'll probably call you in for an entrance conference that hasn't been scheduled at this time. They're going to be here the majority of the work. Everything that they've, that both the Treasurer's Office and the Finance Department did upload their materials to the portal for, to court of our CPAs. And so they'll be here for their onsite work and testing. And so that'll be probably approximately four days. Don't know if it'll go any longer. So staff in both the Treasurer's Office and, and the Finance Department will be busy with the auditors next week. It might be some dovetail into the Human Resource Office as well. The auditors will go in there and, and audit their files as well. Meeting with Richard Sanchez yesterday regarding the historic county courthouse. A public, I do want to have a public meeting next week. And I'm going to, we'll have to do it as early as, is Monday, the 24th. Mr. Sanchez is going to see if Doug Patterson is available to moderate. Did also ask Mr. Sanchez to check with the town of Tous. I'd like to do it actually in the plaza in the middle of, in the gazebo. So there's going to be work beginning in earnest next week. And I think it's highly important that it's open for everybody, but the plaza merchants understand what, because now they're going to start seeing activity. So I told Richard, let's get this done and schedule for the 24th.
24th, okay.
Right, so well, I need to work with him because I'm not sure of, of, if he's talked to Doug since being him last talked. Tous News is on hold waiting for us to submit the add to them as well. I emailed yesterday and I hadn't previously emailed it because we're going back and forth on the time. I just got a text message earlier at 11:00 AM. Village Acosta has invited the County Commission to attend a retreat on October 22nd at the Kit Carson Boardroom to listen to the presentation regarding a potential green hydrogen facility in Acosta. And now that time has been set at 11:00 AM. Green hydrogen is considered a clean method of producing energy. The presentation will be done by the National Renewable Energy Laboratory. That's who's doing the presentation. Members of Kit Carson Board may also be present. And members of the Acosta Economic Development Fund Board may also be present as well. And lunch will be provided as well. So at 11 o'clock, we kind of went back and forth on that because of the next item. UNM Tous has invited us to attend the grand opening of the College Pathways to Career Center for the Ded, and for the dedication. Have Senator Curtis Snodgrass and the Healy Foundation land grant the SECA articles on Saturday, October 22nd from 9:45 to 11:00 AM. So I believe you all may have gotten invitations for that. I didn't see them, but I believe you guys got them. So that's why I was trying to get that green hydrogen done after that, that way there was no conflict. If you wanted to attend both. The Tous Housing Partnership Community Open House is next week, October 26th from 5:30 to 7:00 at Baton Hall at UNM Tous. We'll get that posted on our Facebook page and on our website. Do want to work with the Housing Partnership to see if there's a link. And it's a good segue over to that the county has hired Gizmo Productions. Max Molten is the principal. And so they're going to work with us on our website. Mr. Miller is going to work on a little bit of a procedure for the departments to submit their information. If you look at the vote here, or the vote thing on our website, that was Mr. Molten's work on that. And so, so I believe he's doing 20 hours a week. Is that, no? Eight hours a month. So the departments that are still submitting their stuff like before will continue. And those, some areas that may need extra help, that's where Max will come into, into play as well. I don't know where I got the 20 hours a week from, 20 hours a month. So that's something Mr. Miller and Mr. Silva have been working on for a little while now on how we could improve our efficiency on the website as well. There's a flu shot clinic on, there's a, October 24th from 11:00 to 2:00 PM in the large conference room next to the clerk's office. It's also open to your family members as well. So it's for all employees and our family members. Tous County did have a table at the, at the Tous County Chamber of Commerce Job Fair last week. Thank you, Commissioner Brush, for, for dropping by. We did have some of our department heads and personnel drop by as well, walk the floor. We did for sure received one application. I want to say it's two. I was unable to confirm that. You know, the staff was happy with the one application that we received. And tomorrow, I don't know how far we'll get, but I am meeting with our local appraiser who's not under contract or we don't have a purchase order. But we're, you know, work, work with the local appraiser for, to define the scope of work more clearly. He has some time available and that'll work with the county. Again, detox, feel about the building, Ag Center and the community centers or his scope of work to determine rental values for each of those locations. I'd still probably break these up into different components versus trying to get it all one. Or maybe it'll be one PO and, and, but I need the work product coming in to me at a different time. So we'll work that out and I'll be able to report back to the commission on that as soon as we get that worked out. Where Mr. Alex Beta is working to acquire those three right away takings that we need to go to construction. And he's also submitted the invitation to bid for La Marada Road to Ms. Viehle. It hasn't gone out, but we still need to finish up those takings on those three parcels as of Monday that hadn't been completed. Mr. Beta is working on that as well. And then Mr. Sanchez will do his presentation on the cemetery at next month's meeting, but usually does. But the trip should be coming, being delivered next week and they'll begin to get installed. And, and we're hoping for good weather so that way the paving will also get done. So we're making a lot of progress at the cemetery. But Mr. Sanchez will inform me of that on the first meeting in November as well. But there's been a lot of activity out there. And I did invite Lieutenant Governor next time he's in Tous to stop by and visit it. We were trying to work it in with Outdoor Economics Conference, but he wasn't able to go out there. But he said the next time he comes in, he'll be able to build that into there. So I stand for any questions?
Commissioners, any questions before I go?
Hey, I have one question, Madam Chair, and thank you, Brent, for the update. My, my question is actually not related to the things that you said, but I'm just wondering, do we, do we continue to have a vacancy on the Planning Commission?
We have a vacancy on the Planning Commission, but there's no mechanism within the land use regulations to fill a vacancy. So we need to change that. And I was in a, I talked to Ms. Romero, we did get a email this morning that I responded to that we need to fix that within the LUR to address that issue. There's not a mechanism to fix it.
And until we, until we address that in the land use regs, we don't have anything to do in terms of appointing somebody to fill that vacancy?
No, we don't.
Okay.
And I guess they didn't contemplate that 10 years ago about a vacancy.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Madam Chair, in relation to what the Commissioner just said, could you research any kind of emergency clause resolution? We could pass in lieu of having to change the land use regs. It's, it's worth exploring, Ms. Corey, on if we need to appoint someone. If we can just have some kind of emergency resolution, emergency clause that gives us authority to do that and not have to rely on these outdated land use regs. Just a thought.
Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Donnell, for Miss Stress Benefit, I think Mr. Trujillo is already looking at it.
Okay, thank you. Just one, and thank you for the Gizmo helping with the website. I would request that for admin, we get all the county's resolutions up in one spot and perhaps ordinances in one spot. I know a lot of it would go through Planning Department, but I think it's important to have all these current resolutions up on our website. And so if, keep that in mind when admin does these updates and changes, I think that's important.
Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Donnell totally agree with your statement. And me and Mr. Silva have had that conversation many times. I also think there should be a, some kind of, and Mr. Miller hasn't heard this, a kind of cross-link. If, if it goes up on the planning side, the affordable housing ordinance that it hits a generalized area where all ordinances reside. So that way there, you could find it, you should be able to find it on the planning side and you should be able to find it in the clerk's office side or there'd be a tab. So I think it has to hit multiple, multiple areas. Because if you're looking for something planning-related, you just want to look through the, look at the planning documents versus going through 42 different ordinances that may be listed out on, on the clerk's side, so.
Yes.
Right.
It's a process, but very much I'm sure will be appreciated by us as well as the public. Okay, any other questions? If not, I'd like to ask just a few. Mr. Hadameo on the Morada, because I know our timeframe is really, really just, we need to hit this at the right time because of the SECA system. Are we going to be able to accomplish that this year? Because I know where we're at, you just stated that. But, you know, just wondering, is this going to go into next year if we don't accomplish achieving those easements that we need? The, not the easements, the actual property?
Conceivably, yes. I don't know if Mr. Silva has anything to add.
I have an upcoming meeting that I have to, that I've been asked to, to give a, an update on that. And I need to know what to tell them.
She's asking if it wouldn't obtain those easements or those takings for La Marada, is this going to push the construction until next year?
And then we'll have the SECA system to deal with again.
Yeah, yes. Right now I talked with Alex Vito this morning and yes, they're finalizing all of that, all the identifiable paperwork. So the attorney has finalized it. I think he said he should have everything by the end of the week. It's still a slow-moving process because we went to that outside contractor that, that essentially it's the attorney that handles all the land acquisitions from vital structures. So she's, we should have kind of probably contracted with her last year because it seemed like that was the cleanest fit. No, that shouldn't be an issue though. Because we're still looking at, all that is going to be winter work because we can't work between April 15th, well, actually it'd be May when they start cleaning the SECA's through October 1st was the Maradona. I said we couldn't touch it. So what is today, we're about 11 days behind schedule, but we could still pull off this. And a lot of that work, the private, the scope of work that wouldn't be conducted in this go-around would be paving that front intersection of the road. But that, that's because we're probably going to meet the timelines of sub-degree 50-degree temperatures that it's not optimum to lay asphalt at that time.
Right, makes sense.
But all the SECA work and all the headgates and all the components that are on these purchases of these properties would be conducted between, over the span, at least before April. And that would be, we wouldn't be in the way of any of the, or if we, if by some chance something, there's something that doesn't fall through, we'd have to wait till next October again.
Right, and that's what I'm trying to avoid. But yeah, I do understand that you all have been working hard on trying to get this to move forward. So that's, thank you for the update.
Stay real closer, but still.
Yeah, I know. I get it, I do. You know, we just get a little impatient.
Yeah, I'm not sure when this project started, but yeah, I know that we're, we're already at the.
It was prior to when I came on, so I'm just kind of continuing, but.
Yeah, it would have been a year, two years, and we've been working on it almost two years.
Right. But it's not the only thing we're working on. And I say that with respect to you all because I think sometimes we forget that it's not the only thing we're working on. And, and so, you know, it's important for people to understand there's a lot of things happening at the same time.
Yes.
And then one last comment in regards to the job fair, and I wish I could have attended. I was not here, otherwise I would have. But I wanted to share just quickly that during the housing summit in Albuquerque, the conference, I did attend one of the workshops in regards to, in regards to hiring individuals and why it's so difficult. It was a really interesting conversation. interesting conversation to hear what others thought was taking place in their communities. And we're all having the same issues. We're just not getting people to respond to, to our call for them, you know, for, for hiring. And, and so what I did hear was times have changed, and we all know that, but some of the things, ideas they brought forth were like, apparently job fairs don't work as well as they used to. And it looks like people are actually doing things online and doing interviews of themselves. And so, for example, if you put out a position and you, you know, same thing, you, you know, go through that process, but they're able to submit a little, kind of, I guess, little snapshots of whatever, basically the resume and, and, in that format. I'm not saying that's the right way. I just thought that was really interesting because I've always liked the, let me look at you. I want to look at your eyes. I want to see who you are. And, you know, a lot of times when you have that person in front of you, you can really hopefully gauge who, you know, the sincerity and what they're telling us. But I just thought that was really interesting that they are starting to, people are applying online and using that method. Yeah.
Before, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, Madam Chair, you know, not to necessarily set out like next steps that we should be doing around hiring. I think we should be doing all the steps to like doing like everything we possibly can. But, you know, we just finished talking about the website, having a listing front and center of open positions at the county at TaosCounty.org would be a really, one simple way. I know, Mr. Silva, you've talked about that as well. So I hope in the website work that we're doing, like, that's one easy way to at least make it possible for people who might not be looking in the paper and we might not have an ad in the paper that week, just for people to find out really easily what's available here, what the opportunities are.
So that was the comment I was going to make is Mr. Silva did convey to Mr. Moulton and Mr. Miller that, that being able to submit a resume and your application online is paramount. So that's one of the tasks that Mr. Moulton's going to work on right off the bat. So I forgot about that. And, and then I, but that, that conversation took place last week. So, so, because Jason told me that conversation took place. The other thing that I challenged Mr. Miller on is it doesn't have to be a, or application that you've all seen, and it'd be a PDF fillable format. If E-Civics, if Civics Plus, our website, has a product that we can buy or another component or, or a module, is, I think that's the proper word, there's another module to do it, to, to make it a lot easier. Let's explore that module as well. But, but that is important, that would make it a lot easier. I know even Mr. Silva made this point yesterday in our leadership team meeting yesterday afternoon, because he talked to it, about it, is instead of, right now, some Mr. Prince sent them out, either hand deliver it or you, or you stick it in the mail. So today's day and age, that's inefficient. So.
Okay, great. Thank you.
In relation to that, you know, we could put up some signs, like the town has done, hiring.
HR, I'm sorry, apologize. Human Resource Department has ordered a banner. Trying to remember the local company, but they out turned around and outsourced it.
Okay.
So I know Ms. Swazza was talking about that. I'd already known it was in the works, but I know she was working on that last week.
And then one quick question. Are we having the joint town council meeting next week?
I believe so.
Right on. And what's the time?
There's been a request for that we either start at 5:00 or 6:00 PM. Me and Mr. Silva did meet with Mr. Gonzalez on another matter yesterday. And so we are going to try to meet later this week and we'll work on that agenda. And then the other thing that I sent an email to Mr. Trujillo yesterday was we need to work on the memorandum of understanding or JPA with the Town of Taos for the recycling Name of the property?
Herdner, not Herdner.
I was gonna say Herdner too.
The.
Bertha, yeah. So we need to get, working on, on that as well.
Okay. I don't have any other questions, Commissioners?
With passing the ag resolution, if you think it's appropriate, let, we need to put out something for letters of interest?
Right.
You know, let's open it up and see who applies and we can reach out to various farmers, et cetera. But I, I think it would be appropriate just to announce that we're, we're looking for members.
And I, in regards to that, after the fact, of course, it's already been decided. But I guess I have a quick question. Was the stakeholder board ever notified that we were going to have this, that this is on the agenda? I know, I know we rely on people to pay attention to what's on the agenda. My question is, do you know, Mr. Hadamiyo, if we ever notified anyone?
No.
Of the stake, okay. That's a concern that we, you know, and I failed to say during that moment, but I'm going to say it now, that there was a stakeholder, as we all know, meeting, and I was under the impression they were invited. I think just going forward, because obviously, we're obviously trying to resolve these, these things that are in front of us. But if we could remember going forward to make sure that we invite the appropriate, the people that have been part of. And so that would be my only regret at this moment, is if that didn't happen. Because I, otherwise I felt like we had done well. Okay, thank you. Just wanted to point that out going forward. It's Okay. So now we're going to move on to, and thank you, Mr. Hadamiyo, for all your hard work. Commissioners report matters. We are on new business to be considered in at a future commission meeting. Commissioners, do you have anything you'd like to?
Yes. Long Term and Aging would like to give a brief presentation on the survey that was done a few months back to let the commission know the findings. So that will either be a request for the next, the meeting in November 1st or 2nd. I will check with them, but it'll be brief, just so the commission knows what the needs of seniors are and what the survey found out.
Great. And I would like to just let you know, as well as ask that we consider a workshop, I'm sorry, a work study with Holy Cross Hospital, the new interim CEO, Mr. James Kaiser. I did meet with him and he is definitely wanting to understand what we do a little bit more, as well as, I think we have an opportunity to actually get around a table and, and discuss what they're doing on that end and our concerns. Mr. Hadamiyo, I'll definitely rely on you to tell us, as well as the other commissioners, what that might look like. But we have commissioners that have been really involved with the Holy Cross Hospital and their doings from way back then. So what my thought was to have the existing commission and the incoming join us at a meeting so that we can, you know, certainly draw from the expertise of the commission that are leading. They know a lot of the history, as well as those that are coming in would be able to hear about it. So that's just a suggestion. Certainly look forward to hearing some feedback on that, on how, what that might look like. This is, it's our hospital, right? Our hospital. So we have an opportunity to, to come, get around a table and, and really share our concerns and our thoughts.
And thank you, Madam Chair. If I may thank you for drawing my memory. There is a hospital contract that we have that is very outdated, that we, it was being worked on, and then, you know, everything happens and it didn't get done. I, I think you guys should look at the current contract. I've made suggestions. It's just outdated. It doesn't reference millevies, GRTs. I think it still references, the hospital gives us an ambulance. I mean, it's just, it's an old contract that if we're looking at the hospital, we really ought to look at that contract and get it current. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioners, in regards to, and, okay, Commissioners announcements? Okay, so new businesses, we're done? Or, yeah, nothing else? Okay. So going into Commissioners announcements.
Madam Chair, I do have two.
Oh, yes.
Quick announce, I do have two quick announcements, not new business, but quick announcements. You know, as if Saturday, the 22nd weren't already full enough, there are two other things happening that day. One is the Rio Fernando Cleanup, the annual cleanup day from nine till noon with lunch provided. And at nine, you either meet here or meet at the Taos Land Trust. And then in the evening on Saturday, still the 22nd, there is an event with a new group called Together with Veterans. I've been participating with the Steering Committee. Together with Veterans is a veteran-driven program with the mission of bringing rural veterans, specifically rural veterans and their partners together with, with the goal of reducing the risk of suicide among our veterans, because it's, it's a high rate. So this program is something that has been designed by the Department of Veteran Affairs. So they have been providing guidance to the Steering Committee, which is majority veteran, not that I am. But, so Saturday at 5:00 is a community meeting for those interested in this issue to come together and to discuss, what do we have here in terms of resources in the community? What do we need to do? What are our opportunities? What are we missing? So it's an open conversation with the community at 5:00 in the Town of Taos, the conference room right next to where the town council meets on Civic Plaza Drive, 5:00 to 7:00, 7:30, I believe, with a meal provided from Tia Kitchen. So if you can be there, if you have more questions, just, you can be there. Wonderful. If you have more questions, please reach out to me. So, thank you.
Madam Chair, before you read your announcement, UNM is hosting a 10 to 4 on the October 25th, Counseling for Medicare. And this is really important, given the fact that we get bombarded by 30, 45 companies wanting business, you know, when you have to enroll in Medicare. And this is sponsored again by Long Term and Aging and the state's health insurance. And it's, I think it's important because it can be very confusing for the elderly. There are so many options, companies that will get straight talk, October 25th at UNM Padre Martinez Hall at the Clower Campus. That's from 10 to 4 in counseling sessions. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, if there's nothing else from you both, I'm going to go ahead and, and read something here that, that I think as Commissioners, we have to, often, I think it's, it's important that we remind each other of, of, let me just go ahead and read it, and then I might have some comments. This is not easy, but it's, it's very necessary. And so I'm going to go ahead and just start. As Taos County Commissioners, how we conduct ourselves matters. Our roles carry significant responsibility and our actions carry public consequences. Because of this, we agree to follow a specific code of ethics and we renew that commitment at the start of each year of our service. That code of ethics hangs here in this chamber. It states that we recognize that the chief function of our commission is to serve the best interest of all people of Taos County. It also states that we recognize that, as elected representatives of the people, we establish local government policies while responsibility for policy execution rests with the appointed officials and employees. These statements direct how we are expected to treat the community as well as our county staff. We are dedicated to acting with honor and integrity in all public and personal relationships in order that the commission may merit the respect and confidence of other elected officials, county officials, county employees, and the public. Recently, this respect and confidence was broken. A commissioner used one's family's personal tragedy to publicly promote a cause without consulting that family or gaining their permission. On behalf of Taos County, the Board of County Commissioners and Taos County Management, I sincerely apologize. We are so sorry for the hurt cause to a family and our community by the actions of one commissioner. Though the rest of us were not involved and mostly not aware, we are all deeply sorry. To reflect on what happened and to help ensure that we as a body better execute our duties and respect the deep responsibility of our role, at our next meeting, we will meet in executive session to further discuss Commissioner conduct, conduct and potential consequences, including censure. I say this with a heartfelt to this individual that is, has been hurt. And, but I think, you know, Commissioners, fellow Commissioners, this is a hard job, right? Sometimes we get it right, sometimes we don't. But we always have to consider, you know, the public. And I, I want to say that, knowing each and every one of the commission, I, I believe the intents are always good. That's, we intend, we go out with, we go out there with good intentions, trying to do what's right. And so this code of ethics, which we have signed, reminds us, and we probably need to remind each other daily, if that's what it takes, that we need to certainly remember our purpose and, and that our actions have consequences. I know as Chair, I, I believe there is this freedom of speech, we all know it exists, but it's my job to make sure that, that even in a meeting, that things are kept, you know, where we're treating each other with respect. I, I just want to also turn it over to anyone who wants to comment in regards to this public notice. Anything else, Commissioners? Okay. Well, with that being said, I'll go ahead and move forward. And let's move on to, let's see, the Board Committee reports. And it looks like I'm up, Northern Rio Grande Heritage Area Board. And I'm going to pull up my notes so I can share with you. Okay. As a board member of the Rio Grande Heritage Area, I attended the Alliance of National Heritage Area, the 2022 Fall Conference on October 10th through the 13th. The conference was attended by many heritage area members of, of the heritage areas and hosted by Sangre de Cristo Heritage Area, which encompasses Alamosa, Guadalupe, Anfinito, Manitas, Fort Garlin, San Luis and other areas I'm sure I'm failing to mention. We visited many of the, the historical areas and heard the many great stories of, of history and what has taken place in that, in that area. I have to tell you, I learned quite a bit. Besides touring and hearing the history of the amazing places, the businesses of, the business of the alliance was conducted at Adam State University. And there was much talk about a bill that will be going up at, at the federal level, in which will keep these heritage areas going forward, and that there will be continued funding. We also saw, we were entertained by Los Vecinos Bailadores, Semillas de la Tierra and Mariachi San Luis, with the best meal being Homey Tortillas and Papa Sempre Joles y Chile with, with the sweet Spanish rice. I was also recruited to sit on the Alliance of National Heritage Areas Diversification, Equity and Inclusion Committee. And this, this particular committee is, work is to develop and to amplify the diverse heritage and highlighting cultures across nations. And more so to make sure that past and present are, that we're reminded that they shape who we are. And also that those really tough stories continue, that are, that voices are, are heard, not excluded, silenced, erased or lost. And so it was one of, it was just a great conference. Really enjoyed the conference. But at the forefront, as Chair of the Marketing Communications Committee with the Northern Rio Grande National Heritage Area, we're finalizing our updated brochure and 12-year report, in which I will be happy to share Commissioners in the near future with you all, as well as the public. That is all I have at this time. Okay. We have one more matter, and that is the Taos County Board of Commissioners may convene in close session, and yes, Mr. Harameo?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, I recommend that we either postpone or table in lieu of the time, so, and plus, we don't have two other members of the body, so.
Okay.
It was nothing urgent, so I recommend postponing or tabling.
Commissioners? Is there a motion to postpone or table?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to postpone. Item 16A, Discussion Regarding Proposed Purchase of Property, that would have been discussed in executive session, that we postpone until the next meeting?
Okay, I will second that. So there's a motion and a second to postpone?
Yes.
And call for the vote? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Right, Chairbrush?
Yes.
Chair of the Hill?
Yes. At this time, we're at adjournment. So Commissioners, are you in agreement? And we'll just say it's okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Looks like we pissed off the stakeholders group, the stakeholders group. I don't understand, you can't make them all happy. Sorry.